Student's to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Moving on to public hearing, public hearing on the approval to expend unanticipated revenue funds.
Yeah, so the purpose of this public hearing is to hear any comments from the community regarding the proposal to utilize surplus revenue. So this is a procedural safeguard. We're actually gonna start doing this every year. That's because if by some reason we go, we overexpend our appropriations, that doesn't mean we necessarily have a negative balance because we also have on the revenue side, we may have surplus revenue. So if, you know, we go over, we can utilize that surplus to cover any expenditures. Now that, on a practical level, that will happen regardless, but it's really from an audit and compliance perspective, we just, we need a vote from the board in order to use that. Now that being said, I don't anticipate that we will need to utilize any surplus revenue. We're, you know, as you know, we have a very tight budget, but in the event that, you know, we do have some unanticipated costs in the next, you know, three weeks, that bring us over, that would just safeguard us against that from occurring. So there is a agenda item on the board, on the agenda this evening, and that's to authorize the use of up to sixty thousand dollars from surplus revenue.
How much is in the surplus, do we know?
So we currently are projecting close to sixty thousand dollars. That's, it'll likely fall a little lower, it'll probably be about forty thousand dollars. Our revenue, some of our revenue sources are lagging. So for example, we get reimbursed for Medicaid. We're already above our estimated revenues for Medicaid. However, we won't know until July and then even, maybe even into August, how much we actually get because we get reimbursed after the fact.
Is it appropriate to ask questions now or to wait until?
Right, should we open public comment now or is it just a public case?
Well, no, I meant for us, because I know it's later on. I didn't know if this was specifically just for public or if I can figure out.
You can absolutely ask questions and then open up for the public to ask questions. Do you have any comment?
Okay, um, so it says basically using the surplus revenue for special education and building repair costs. Now, wouldn't we tap into our, um, our funds for that instead of using our revenue?
Yeah, so it's, that's another revenue source. We just needed to, we just had to delineate what potential overages are, and we're already over in both special education and building. Now, that's, you know, that's always an alternative. After we finish our audit, we could, we could absolutely, if we do have a deficit, we could have a public hearing and make a withdrawal from either of those to expendable trusts.
Mm-hmm.
However, the surplus revenue is always a good first item to pull from because it's, that's not, that's money that's not rolling over from year to year.
That's like the user deficit, right?
Right, so that's typically what you utilize first, but absolutely, and we can't do that in, after July first. So this, this allows us to do so. Now, if you decide in August or September that you don't want to use the surplus revenue, we could always not and then use the expendable trust. So, but this gives us the opportunity to do so, but we can't make a vote in, after the audit for this, for the revenue.
Right, okay.
So it just gives you options and, and we can certainly, before we close the books, we will, if it comes to the point where we need to use money, which again, I don't think we will, then we can, we'll, we'll ask you how you want to present.
Okay, and this only can be used for special education and building repair costs? That's what, that's just what I'm reading off of.
Yeah, so we would only utilize surplus revenue if our overall budget goes over. However, we need to specify the, what accounts we'd be using from, and those are the two that would be, that are already over budget, so we pull from one of those two.
So we would be specific to those two?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you use it for physicians if you decide to?
So it's for this current fiscal year?
So it has to be?
It has to be for this year. We're not really using it. It's just, it's there already. It's more a matter of, and we're not planning to spend more. It's if we happen to go over budget. It's just to cover that deficit.
And if you don't, what happens? What does the general public know?
So it goes into the unreserved fund balance, and the unreserved fund balance of next fall, that'll be returned to the town to offset property tax assessment. That's part of the tax rate setting process.
Thank you. So do you need any, are we doing a motion on this now or?
So not during the public hearing, however, at the, later on in the agenda, this is an item, so you can make a motion.
Okay. Any other questions? So I need a motion to close?
Well, I need public. Do we ask the public if they have any comments?
So this would be the appropriate time if anyone did want to speak on this topic.
Do we already have to open the public comment or is it separate?
No, this is separate.
It's a public hearing and there's a public comment.
A public hearing portion of this.
And then if no one wants to speak, then you just close the public hearing.
Okay. Do we have any questions from the audience? Okay, not seeing any. So we will close the public hearing at four thirty-eight. Oh, some favor. And moving on to student report.
Hello, we're the student representatives of Seabrook Middle School this year. We're happy to represent our school. My name is Trevor Greeley.
And I'm Jay Bully. We're in eighth grade.
Last month, the eighth grade took their trip to Washington DC. They got to experience national monuments, museums, and memorials to honor the ones we've lost. These students went to Smithsonian museums, the National Archives, and so many more amazing monuments like the Lincoln and Washington. Our teachers, tour guides, and bus drivers gave us an amazing experience we will never forget. Eighth grade also got to go kayaking in the marsh this year to see amazing wildlife.
Throughout the year, the seventh grade had the opportunity to visit some great places and experience amazing field trips. They went to Salem, Massachusetts, and visited museums to learn about the history of the blisk trials. They got to see a reenactment and saw an important part of the history of New England.
The sixth grade got to experience being with wildlife and nature as a part of their trip to the ecology school. They stayed in dorms at the camp and had fun classes where they learned about animals, planets, and nature. This gave the sixth graders an experience in the outdoors like no other.
The Boston Tea Party museum was a fun learning experience for the fifth graders. They all got to participate in a meeting to plan the rebellion against the unfair taxes like our founding fathers. They threw tea into the harbor and then learned more about the start of the Revolutionary War. The fifth grade also had to take a trip out back into the marsh to learn about all the wildlife, plants, and water.
It was a great spring sport season for SMS track, baseball, and softball. All the teams had a great teamwork that formed a wonderful season. All the coaches are so proud of the growing SMS athletes and are excited to see how they go on in high school.
The Spring Band Chorus Concert was a wonderful performance that showed the skill and the time these musicians put into mastering their instruments. They got all gold medals at the Gradius Festival, and Mr. Willie couldn't be prouder.
The art show was last Thursday and showed off the artistic ability of students here at SMS.
The eighth graders are transitioning from middle school and heading to Oneikin High School. Their graduation will take place on June twelfth, and everyone's invited.
We want to thank our teachers, principals, and staff here at SMS for another spectacular school year. Thank you for your time and we hope to see you at graduation.
Thank you, and we'll move on to the youth to youth presentation.
Start by introducing ourselves.
I'm Jacob Deloitte.
I'm Jake, I'm Jake Kirsten.
Okay, are you coming?
Uh, seven, grown in eighth grade.
I'm also going into eighth grade. This is our presentation, Happy Birthday. Youth puts on a little movie every year. It's all about how drugs, alcohol, vaping, smoking affects youth and how to stop it in our community.
So we made a film, um...
Where were we last night?
Uh, we went, we went to, forced a few to call to view it with all the other youth groups across New Hampshire, and got to watch all the other films.
So here's our film.
Seriously, can we wait till last Friday night? God, you're kidding me. Seriously.
I'm gonna try it, okay. Honey, are you okay?
I'm fine.
I'm sorry, my sister just really wanted to surprise you. I know it was a bit much.
I said I'm fine.
I'm here, I don't want to talk about it.
I don't want to talk about it. Go to school.
Have a nice day. Love you. Hey, it's your birthday today, right?
Yeah.
Happy birthday. Alright, so we need to get started. Everyone has their article. You're gonna read through, answer the questions with your partner. Get started.
Missed out. Edward has a question.
Edward? Um, I'm a public worker. Okay, Blake, you're gonna go ahead and work with Edward. Yes, Blake?
I'll go to bathroom.
Of course.
Hey.
Hey. Uh, what class do I?
LA.
I'm in science.
Oh, yes.
Hey, is this your birthday?
Yeah, my parents live across the street.
Great, what's going on here? Oh, I'll take that. Let's go, come on, make the office, let's go.
Listen, this is your third vaping offense. You have to follow the school's right policy. You're being suspended for ten days. We're gonna call your parents. They're on their way down.
Whoa.
Wait, how is this happening?
I don't know.
Why is this going on the third?
I don't know, it just happened.
Come here, hey!
Hey, birthday boy!
Did you spend it out of your mind?
Yeah, I'm supposed to wash my teeth out of my teeth.
What's with your parents freaking out? How'd they get up here?
They're not here.
Happy birthday, boy!
What? Why do this again? My birthday's over.
What did I do wrong?
You didn't try anything. I'm gonna talk to Edward. Well, I'm gonna try anyway.
I was just trying to surprise him.
Ah, yes. What? The same day.
Honey, are you okay?
I'm fine.
I'm sorry, your sister just really wanted to surprise you. I know it was a bit much.
I said I'm fine.
Hey, I'm here. I don't want to talk about it.
I don't want to talk about it. I'm fine. Go to school.
Have a nice day. Love you. Hey, it's your birthday today, right?
That was yesterday.
No, they announced it this morning.
They did?
Yeah, happy birthday. We need to get started. Please read the article and you're gonna answer the questions on the back with your partner. Go ahead.
Missed out. Edward has a question.
Edward? Um, I'm a public worker. Uh, Blake, you're gonna work with Edward.
Okay, are you kidding me?
Go.
Blake?
I'll go to bathroom?
Of course.
Hey, is a lot of the office still on the go?
Uh, yeah, science is still warm.
Well, my parents are here this morning and they're looking.
Hey, what's going on here? How we taking that? Let's go, let's go, office, both of you now.
Listen, this is your third vaping offense. We have to follow our school's right policy.
Wait, let me get, I've been suspended for ten days, right? My parents come pick me up?
Well, yeah, that's what's happening. Listen, tomorrow's a new day. You have a chance to make things right. You're on the phone.
Why? I didn't want to say.
You're on the phone, you're on the phone. Do me a favor, buddy. Help me understand what's going on.
I don't know.
Okay, okay, honey, we're just really worried about you, that's all.
How can this happen again?
I don't know, I already told you yesterday.
Whoa, whoa, come here, come here, come here.
Hey, birthday boy!
Did you spend it out of your mind?
I won't talk about it, let's celebrate.
Happy birthday, buddy!
Yeah, okay, thank you. I gotta go. We'll do this later.
Why is he acting?
Hey, it's your birthday today, right?
Yeah.
What do you know? Okay, so you're gonna read the article, answer the questions on the back with your partner. Go ahead and get started.
Missed out. Edward has a question.
Edward? Um, I'm a public worker. Blake, you're gonna work with Edward. Blake?
Hey, what's up?
You're four.
Hey, dude, what's up?
Hey, have you seen anybody wearing a red sweatshirt?
No, why?
Think, have you seen anybody wearing a red sweatshirt?
Dude, what's up with you?
Alright guys, hey, what's going on here? Freaking out. Back to class, let's go. Hey, honey, how's it going? Hello, can you put the phone down?
Uh, I just need a minute.
Blake, I made this for you.
Oh, Jesse, this is really beautiful.
Thank you. I've never seen you knit with you. You've been so different lately.
You know what? You're right, but listen, I have something to do tonight. I'll probably be out tomorrow or five o'clock.
Yay, can't wait.
You have plans tonight?
Yeah, me and my friend are here at the rest, can I?
Sure, just be on by seven.
You know, I know I've been different lately, but I want you to know I love you.
I love you too, honey, and I know things have been hard, but I know you're fine, you're right, you always do.
I gotta go, bye.
Bye, have fun, be safe.
Thanks, mom.
Hey, birthday boy!
Why'd you just do that?
We just thought playing bad's gonna happen.
Oh yeah, like what?
Think, have you seen Ava with a red sweatshirt?
Nobody here has a red sweatshirt on. Seriously, what is your problem?
Look over there.
Forget about Edward.
Hey Blake, I want you to know I'm proud of what you did yesterday. You quickly actually saved Edward. You weren't too pleased with how the kids drank and vaping, but now we'd more than again need some help. You did the right thing. I'm proud of you. I want you to know that.
You know, I don't get a lot of trouble lately, but I want to be different. I don't want to keep making the same mistakes.
I think that's a smart choice. While you're at it, I think Edward is a friend.
That was great. That was awesome.
You guys did a really good job.
I got chills.
A lot of work.
Yeah, that's awesome. Thank you so much for that presentation.
We just want to have, like, anyone, feel free to share your social medias. We get our message out to as many youth as possible. So share away. It's on our Seabrook Youth to Youth page.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, we're gonna move on to public comment. We're gonna open a public comment at four fifty-three.
Does anyone mind turning the lights back on? Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Marley Eaton. I have spoken many times to you all before in 2023 as the student representative in my eighth grade year here at Seabrook Middle School. And I've spoken at past meetings last year in clubs at Oneikin that connect Seabrook students. Now, I have finals, so it's a little planned that I have to be here right now. I'm not studying, but I felt like it was really important to talk about this subject today. And I'm here to talk about a single reason, one person, Andrew Codere. He is one of the pillars in not just my education, but in my life. I can reflect back on my four years at Seabrook Middle School, and I have such fond memories in every one I was with Codere. I had had him as my sixth grade science teacher and went through some of the hardest times in my young life in that year. Sorry. From COVID-19, my mom losing her job, losing our home. Oh my God, I totally was gonna stop, I was gonna cry. Losing our home and losing all my family, I was, I felt utterly alone in every aspect, and I fell into severe anxiety at an early age. School became quite difficult and I struggled. Mr. Codere recognized that and helped me understand what I was learning in the classroom and out. Mr. Codere was the one person who saw me. He never judged me. He always made me smile and truly cares for not only me, but every student in the halls of this school. His thoughtfulness and kindness did not just stop at the classroom, but also he volunteered his time as my coach. He was my basketball coach and softball coach for three years. No matter what kind of day here I had, I knew that in his class or at one of the games, I could always count on him to lighten my mood. He single-handedly saved me and made each and every day better, and he didn't know it. He never expected a thank you or anything in return. He truly is not only mine, but so many kids' lights against the darkness. Mr. Codere is the highlight of any kid's day. His sheer ability to make every student feel and make them feel included no matter their background or interests is a gift that I can't say most teachers have. You ask any student in this school who their favorite teacher is, I can guarantee you they will talk about Mr. Codere. And that's not because he's the coolest teacher or knows all the lingo, but because he takes time to ask kids how their days are, and he sees us for what we are, humans. He has always understood the personal battles kids go through on the daily and served like my personal therapist for four years now. Checking in on me, seeing how I'm doing, little things like that that have made the biggest impact. He listened to every detail and gave me the best advice I could ask for, but I won't admit that. And even now, as a sophomore in high school, hearing the news of the possibility he may not be here next year, I was at a loss for words, truly. Because that's how much of an impact he has on me and on every student. I had the privilege of coaching alongside him this year on the middle school softball team, and his capability to rally the team and how to say one sentence and he lifts so many weights off these players' shoulders, it's truly mind-blowing. A skill that I aspire to learn from him. Not even just the girls on the team, but my younger brother, a seventh grader here at Seabrook Middle School. He still comes home and tells me stories of how Mr. Codere made him laugh today, and I can confidently say he is a role model that I am proud my brother looks up to. Mr. Codere is one of those remarkable teachers that appreciates every student for who he or she is. A gift that I cannot believe you are considering getting rid of. If you truly care about the well-being and happiness of the students that walk these halls of this school every day, you cannot possibly consider getting rid of the one thing that can put a smile on the child's face, and that is Andrew Codere. I understand that you have many other variables you must consider and factors into these types of decisions, but I beg you, for me and all the children inside the school and beyond, do not take away these children's joy. I cannot begin to list all of the things that Mr. Codere has done for me and the students of Seabrook Middle School. But this is more than just a political decision or a name on the payroll you need to cut. Mr. Codere is my personal hero, and I can confidently say he is to all the students of Seabrook Middle School. Please consider who your decision is affecting. Thank you for your time.
Any other public comment? Willie could open until five twenty-three.
Hi, Rebecca Sherbahn, eighth grade language arts, speaking on behalf of the eighth grade team, and we'd like to just make sure that we gave a great big thank you to Angel Goran Eaton and April Nickel, owners of Al Goran's Deep Sea Fishing and Whale Watching in Seabrook, New Hampshire. They hosted us today on a wonderfully memorable trip out into the seas beyond Seabrook Harbor, and we could not be more grateful for their kindness or their care for our kids in our community. So thank you so much to them.
Just Karen told my host me. I just want to thank the community for their donations for sixth grade ecology school. I think we've had a very successful fundraising season for the calendar. And I do just want to take this opportunity to just remind folks that we have many students in sixth grade who will not be able to sell calendars. And so while I feel grateful that my daughter will be in a position to do so, and I feel confident that she'll sell the forty-two calendars that she needs to, I just recognize there's many sixth grade students who may not be able to do so. So I put a lot of effort into supporting this calendar effort, but I do hope that in future years we can consider, you know, grant funding or other ways to fundraise so that we're not leaving out our most vulnerable students. I know that there's been some changes in seats with the board in the last year, but I do hope that we can reconsider our openness to grant funds so that our children... our openness to grant funds so that our children can get the best opportunities, um, available to them. Um, so I'm just thinking about in past years, my daughter's been offered opportunities to try dance or karate, things like this that really open up our children's experiences, um, and that has been shut down in the past couple of years. So while I'm very, very grateful to this community who has stepped forward to donate towards sixth grade ecology school, um, I know that that only benefits certain students in sixth grade and not all of us because some parents just don't have the time or resource to support their children on some of these calendars. Um, so I'm happy to contribute any way that I can, but I just wanted to just make sure that was put back on the agenda, um, because I think those grant funds are terribly important to our school to make sure that every child in every grade has equal access to these really exciting opportunities. But I think ecology school is an amazing thing that no child should be, um, left out of, outside of, you know, family preference. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Anybody else? Um, just gonna move on to approve the minutes of April 2nd.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the April 2nd 2025 meeting.
Motion by, most, motion by Lacy, second by?
Second.
Second by Jen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor?
Yes.
I will also make a motion to approve the minutes from the May 13th regular meeting.
Motion by Lacy, second by?
Second.
Jen, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. In unanimous?
In unanimous, thank you.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the May 21st special meeting.
Motion by Lacy, seconded by?
Well, second.
Jen, as a public assistant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. In unanimous?
And then I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the May 28th special meeting.
Second.
Seconded by Jen, motion by Lacy, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna abstain. I don't think I was there for that one.
You don't come to me.
Yeah, I know. It was, uh, it was me, Michelle, and Lacy.
Yeah.
It was after, uh, it was after the joint board meeting.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Yeah. So Jen, you abstaining? Yes.
Maria? No, we don't have to, I don't think. Do we, Meredith?
Have to abstain?
Yeah.
No?
No, we don't anymore.
I thought we did too.
So, but Maria, you a yes? Yes. Thank you.
You still at abstention? Okay, thank you. All right. Reports.
I'm happy to start. Uh, so it is the end of the year. You heard the students describe some of the end-of-year activities that were occurring at the middle school, and there are many that you'll hear about at the elementary school as well. Um, but our faculty and staff are busy planning grade graduation ceremonies, um, recognition for retirees. Uh, we have, um, transition activities occurring. Parents are signing their children up for summer school programs and activities. We are finalizing hires for the upcoming years, um, and just wrapping up managing the annual enrollment process for benefits. So it is a busy time of year. We have scheduled our SAU 21 leadership retreat for August. Um, but all of our administrators across the SAU will gather for PD and planning for the upcoming year, work on our next phase of goals and objectives, supporting the portrait of a learner. Um, I will note I had the opportunity to attend SST graduation, which is the Superschool of Technology, uh, at the end of May, and celebrate our students, um, from Wannacut that have completed their two-year program in animal and plant science, automotive technologies, biomedical science, building construction, careers in education, computer science, culinary arts, digital media, health science technology, marketing technology, pre-engineering, and welding. Um, so they graduated 226 students, the majority of whom are leaving with industry-recognized credentials and certifications. Um, and the vast majority of those students either have plans for an internship or apprenticeship, work in the military, or continued education. So, um, congratulations to all of them and to the many Wannacut students who participated in, um, those programs as well. Um, I will note that the legislative session is wrapping up later this month. So, um, there are some bills that have already been signed into law by the governor that will impact education, um, and others that are still on the agenda. So I encourage you to weigh in with your legislators and let them know where you stand on, um, some of these bills. One that, um, we spoke about at our, um, legislative roundtable, um, pertains to open enrollment. Um, I would encourage you to read the text of that bill carefully. It could have a significant tax impact for this community. I will leave it there. Um, Dr. Chumi also submitted a report.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I have three items.
Can we just hold one second? I just wanted to ask the superintendent if you have questions. Sorry to interrupt.
That's okay.
That's okay. Um, when you say open enrollment, is that the same as the, um, school choice bill that passed today in the sun? Is it separate?
No, that's, those are the education freedom accounts.
Okay.
So that, we already have those in New Hampshire, but this has expanded, um, the number of those, and that is state funding. That doesn't come, well, it does ultimately come from your local tax dollars because you're responsible for any children that take advantage of that. Uh, you lose the equivalent of their adequacy funding. Uh, but the open enrollment bill is, that is separate. Um, it was tagged on to Senate Bill 210 in the House last week. Um, and it, it basically would allow students to attend any school in New Hampshire. Unfortunately, there's no transportation provided, so it really only allows those students whose families have the ability to transport their children to other schools. Uh, but it leaves the resident district responsible for paying tuition to whatever district those children decide to attend, and you also would still be responsible for special education costs. So it could really duplicate, um, costs that you're already having to continue to absorb in your own budget. So it, it could have a pretty significant impact.
So as a board, should we reach out to?
I would encourage you to. I know that your local representatives voted in favor of the bill when it was on the House floor. Representative Khan, um, and, um, some, uh, Schwanger, um, Sporren Schwanger, and McGrath. Um, and it's also a good time to reach out to Senator Gannon, who represents Seabrook Community and Leadership in the State Senate.
So if, so the, the bill that passed today has already been in fact, it hasn't changed?
Uh, it's expanded, yes. It does change things because it, right, right now, as it's been in effect, um, people who can apply for those funds to essentially to send their children to private school was capped at 300% of the poverty level. Now that's open to anyone.
Okay.
Um, so families who may have already been sending their children to private school for, you know, whatever reasons, um, who weren't receiving tax benefits, who weren't drawing out of the public dollars, will now have the opportunity to draw out of the public, public funds.
Will that come out of our school? Because we have?
It pays a portion for education freedom accounts. We are, it does impact our funding, our adequacy. On which other thing?
The, the one you said, the one that's the, um?
Well, we're hoping it doesn't pass. So I would encourage you to contact people now, but if it does pass, the State Board of Education will be determining things like class size for local school districts. Um, and what they consider capacity, um, in your schools to, um, accept students or for other schools to accept students.
So they, so right now, prior to this vote today, you have to have, like, lowest poverty level and, um, did it have to be like a special reason why you were going to another school or anything? It can just be, so now this?
So, so you're mingling the two bills. So the education freedom account is separate?
Yeah.
That's a separate program that's been in place in New Hampshire for several years. Um, today's bill is about open enrollment, which essentially would allow any child in New Hampshire to go to any school at the expense of their resident district.
Okay. Thank you. And then the only other thing I see, um, a whole lot, do you mind before, um, just going a little bit over? Is this your report or Mary Tullie's?
That's Mary. She's gonna go over.
Okay, so she'll go over. Okay, that's good. All right, thank you.
You bet.
Good evening. I have three items for you this evening. There's, uh, lots of texts in them, so I'm gonna just be very brief. The first one, I wanted to just alert you that we had on May 9th, the McKinney-Vento liaison from across New Hampshire uh, at Mountain View Grand Hotel for the annual statewide conference. Uh, brings together educators and specialists dedicated to supporting students who experience homelessness or housing insecurity. Um, the reason why this is such a great event, in my view, is that, um, we have such wonderful facilitation here. Tally Westerberg, many of you know from the joint board meeting and presented many times. She's Wannacut's social worker and McKinney-Vento liaison, and she's the coordinator of this event, um, and did just a fabulous job. The theme for this year's annual conference was on early education and outcomes for students. Um, also our own Patrice Baker, intervention outreach specialist, uh, led a breakout session related to fostering positive experiences for young learners. She recently presented at the joint board meeting as well. So we, we got just great feedback about the conference from all across, um, the state and just very proud of the work that they're doing to support, um, our neediest kids. So, um, kudos to them. Just wanted to shout them out. Uh, I also wanted to give you another reminder that SAU 21 has partnered with the Cook Center for Human Connection. It's providing, um, support for students, for families, and staff, free accessible resources to help families navigate their children's behavioral and emotional well-being. I've listed all of the offerings there. Most of them are at no, all of them for families are at no cost. But we buy into and partner with them to provide our families with no-cost coaching, personalized weekly coaching. It's virtual, but it's 30 minutes once a week. And if the family signs up for this coaching, they have access to their coach, their clinician, um, 24/7 by text or by email. And we have, we started, we launched in 2023, and the number of families that have access to this weekly coaching has remained almost consistent. So once they sign up, they stick with it because it's that valuable. And there's a few, um, statements there about how and why it's valuable to parents and what they're saying. We had a grant this year to pay for the coaching, um, and so that was wonderful that we were able to get those resources, um, from YouthWell New Hampshire. Um, we don't have a grant for next year, and recently, uh, Cook Center agreed to give us a discount, um, along with, uh, joining with SAU 90, uh, since their students feed into Wannacut. And so we just informed all the principals about the new rates for next year, and we're hopeful that principals can, you know, put the dimes together and try to find a way to fund this. Um, they might be looking toward their, their, their PTOs, um, and other fundraising efforts. It's not a huge investment, but it's a very meaningful investment for our families. Our behavioral health teams, psychologists, counselors, uh, social workers, they, uh, you know, really are the ones who are sharing this information, um, with families, um, as things come up for students. Um, and it gives the family a place to go to get really good information about how to deal with. One of the great things that I hope you're all seeing is a monthly newsletter that we get because we're partners with Cook Center, and the principals are great about sending that newsletter out in their, once a month in their weekly communications. Um, the summer one is out now. Fabulous ideas for, you know, getting through summer and giving just great resources, links, ideas for, um, how to prepare for summer and get kids through that time. So just wanted to shout out the Cook, Cook Center and our partnership and put a plug in for that. And then finally, I just wanted to, uh, thank Rising Tides, which is our 501(c)(3) that recently, um, allowed us and allowed the joint board to unanimously approve the reappointment of Annalise Dunn, who is our, um, SAU Y social worker. Annalise has been the, um, McKinney-Vento liaison here at Seabrook for this past year. She's done a wonderful job working with our families, um, and is an invaluable member of our student support team. Um, we're encouraged. We met with Annalise recently and we're reworking her schedule. She's doing many things in a lot of different places to a lot of different, um, needs, but we'd like her to spend a little more time here at Seabrook. So, um, we're looking to do that next year, and, um, just want to say thank you for the resources that are making that position possible for us, SAU Y. That's it for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody have any questions? Moving on to SES Principal's report.
Awesome. Um, my report's kind of short and sweet, and I have, uh, quite a bit more information in our school improvement plan update coming up. But, um, I'll just start quickly, uh, with just some end-of-year data. This is, um, really just draft data as the year is not officially done, but just to try to capture our school safety statistics that we have to report to the DOE. Uh, and so just some highlights that we'll be reporting on. We had a total of 12 incidents at SES that resulted in suspension this year. Um, that's down from 19 from last year. We had four of those were in school and eight were out of school. We had three reported restraints and 25 seclusions that were all investigated and communicated to families. Two reported cases of harassment, two students disciplined for such. We had two reported incidents of bullying, zero confirmed bullying cases after investigating. Um, one of the more alarming statistics is our truancy numbers, and so without a social worker this year, it was certainly hard to do the grueling work and to have the time to really put into helping those families that are dealing with truancy issues. Um, and so truancy defined by five or more full, or it's really 10 or more half-days. It's easier for my brain to wrap that. It's five, five full days. And so we had a total of 88 students that were absent, unexcused, um, for five or more full days, which is not good. And that's up to 30% from 15. So our attendance data is, is not impressive, and that's something we clearly need to work on. And so I'm very excited to hear about Annalise joining us more next year to really be available.
She needs a space. Tim, you're gonna be excited about that, but?
She's, we already got one earmarked for, so yeah.
Alright, thank you.
And so, yeah, that's really just, again, really some of the preliminary data, and, um, our staff was trained suicide prevention, and we have intervention teams both at the school level and the district level that Mary leads, to really help address any and all of, of, yes. Yeah, any questions on any of that before I? Move on? So, yeah, the, the next piece is something that I, I didn't put into my report, but I really quickly wanted to just acknowledge a few individuals. Uh, now that here we are at the end of a fantastic year, I just wanted to, um, shout out our assistant principal, Colleen West. She's been an unbelievable addition to our school this year. Um, I mean it when I say we couldn't have got a better assistant principal. She's been here every day this year, which is crazy to say. She hasn't missed a single day. She commutes about an hour each way, which speaks alone to her dedication and how much she cares about our kids. Um, so we're extremely lucky to have her and excited she's coming back. So thank you, Colleen. And then quickly, I'd like to also just recognize and thank, um, Kirsten Rinaldi, who was reassigned at the beginning of the school year. She did it graciously, and she has been a phenomenal preschool teacher this year. It's not what she wanted to do, but you would never guess that with the way that she works and interacts with kids and families and staff. Um, so thank you to Kirsten. And then also thank you to Kelly McGinnis, who was reassigned to Kirsten's class from math intervention. Um, she also did it graciously, even though it's not what she wanted to do. You'd never be able to tell that. Uh, and so both of them provided excellent educational experiences for our kids pre-K to, to pre-K and kindergarten. And I can't thank them enough for being flexible and really taking one for the team. And then the last person I'd like to just acknowledge is Mary Miller, uh, who will be retiring at the end of this year. Hard to even talk about that without choking up a little bit, because those of you that work with Mary know she's just a phenomenal person, phenomenal educator. Um, will be really sad to see her leave. She's a very valued member of our school and part of the reading team. Um, and the door is always open to you, Mary, so please come back and visit. But, yeah. And that's pretty much it for my report. And like I said, we'll share a little bit more in our school improvement plan on how we did with regards to meeting our goals and some steps for next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to SMS Principal's monthly report.
I'm gonna segue with, um, what Tim said about recognizing staff. We have one staff member, Denise Morrow, who after 30-plus years will be leaving us. She's very humble, doesn't like recognition, doesn't want a party. She's very humble, doesn't like recognition, doesn't want to party, although she'll probably have a cocktail with maybe some of her eighth-grade colleagues. She is, she exudes what everybody should have in a teacher. So, people in this room have had her. You can't thank her enough for everything she's done by teaching students Spanish. And she will be sorely missed by definitely her eighth-grade colleagues and everybody else in school. So, thank you to her. You'll notice that most of the activities that I put were, they was filled with a lot of events. We had a lot of field trips. We had a Ram Rally that was led by students. Usually, it's Rebecca Sherborne and Ryan Langtot. And then we have, you know, A.K. Walker and Mike jump in. But this time, the students kind of took charge of that Kentucky Derby theme. We had a lot of great competition with not only the students, but also the staff as well. We'd like to thank St. James and the Sonic, Waringham, Hampton. They had a reading contest. They did it last year. They did it this year as well with just fifth graders. The more you read, the more tickets you got. And two students were able to obtain bikes. So, we appreciate their support in helping students be lifelong readers. And kind of want to end on a high note because our eighth graders, who we really appreciate everything they've done, even though they've left, they'll be leaving us on Thursday. And they come to the board meetings and all they do for our school. They had the opportunity to have the annual walkthrough of Winnetconet seniors. Anybody who attended, they walked through SES, they walked through SMS. You know, it was great to see them in their caps and gown and walk through the halls. And then they met with the eighth graders, which I think was probably one of the most important parts of the day was they got to ask them the questions of what happens when we go to high school, things that they were afraid of. Probably the best message that they sent to them was show up, adopt a positive mindset, step out of your comfort zone, and try new things. It's scary leaving a school you've been in for, you know, potentially eight or nine years. But I think the Winnetconet seniors, who were former Seabrook students, gave them great advice and we wish them well.
Great. Any questions for Colleen? Do we need to accept the donation?
No, that's just a name acknowledgement of that one.
Oh, that one's a name acknowledgement. All right, moving on to curriculum instruction and assessment.
So, again, to echo off of where Tim and Colleen were saying, very busy time of year for both schools. I started the report just by talking a little bit about our wit and wisdom pilot, but we have that a little bit further on the agenda, so we'll get into more detail then. But we've been busy working on our wit and wisdom programming grades two through eight all year long. And we're, we're going to continue the pilot next year in order to fully develop all of the modules, use the materials that were given to us in a way that teachers can fully explore those and then look at the data at the end of that year. So, we'll have two years' worth of digging in. Some of the teachers use one module, some use more than one. Next year, all the teachers will use more than one. So, that'll give us a little bit deeper look at wit and wisdom for next year. So, we're going to extend the pilot into the second year. We'll talk a little bit more about that later. We continued with our fifth grade has a collaboration with UNH. And that collaboration happened again this year in the fall and in the spring. Some pictures of kids out in the marsh. They go out there and study the marsh, and they connect it to science, to math, to social studies. Teachers do a great job of integrating that right into what the students do. They go out and they take boots on and get money and collect all kinds of specimens. And this year, they collected some eels, which is the whole point of the project. But sometimes the eels don't cooperate. But the eels were there, and the kids were really excited in the spring to catch some eels and, of course, learn all about it. And kind of building off on the science, we had Shea, which is the Seabrook-Hampton Estuary Alliance, which is a group that's supported our school for the last several years with science programming. This year, they did the Lunch, the Lunch with the Scientists series. And one of those scientists offered to come back and have our eighth graders kayak out in the marsh. So, that scientist works at the Seacoast Science Center at Odeon in Wright. And she came back with kayaks and people, and we, all the teachers were flexible and collaborative. And we got all those eighth graders out into the marsh. Some of them got wet. But again, a lot of memorable, as we said. But it was really great because the staff got a chance to be out there too. And it was really a culmination, celebration of the science program that we've been building from fifth grade, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade out on our marsh, our local marsh. This year, we continued with a fifth grade open house that we had last year. We had another one this year for our incoming fifth grade families. So, we had that last week. So, thank you to the families that came and participated and got a chance to tour a little bit and hear about some programming and get their feet wet for fifth grade. And they also had a move-up day, and I think it was to, I forget what it was. Where the fourth graders came yesterday, I lose track. Fourth graders came and also met the teachers of fifth grade. So, again, that transition from fourth to fifth is really important. And it's important that we do that for students and for parents. Professional development this month, we had a half a day. We had an early release. And during the early release, we had a couple of things. We had lots planned, but a couple are highlighted here. We had our wit and wisdom books come and do the second half of a professional development training for the pilot teachers. So, they've had two chances this year to have live professional development from the company to learn how to use the program. It's really important for them to have that time. And then we also had our K-1 teachers work with our literacy consultant and go through the Hegarty Program, which is a phonetic awareness program that we use in K-1. So, they had a chance to dig deep into that. I think the last part, no, not the last, but we had assessment. We finished up our SAS assessments for our state tests. And we've also finished up NEWA in the spring for grades two to four. Both of those results of both of those assessments will be mailed home with report cards. So, parents will have a mailing that has a report card and also the family reports that go with our SAS data or a NEWA data, if your student took that NEWA data. Parents can also access their state testing information on this, on the state website. All that information has been sent out to parents. It's also here in the report. And it's an opportunity for parents to go into a portal and they can see their child's most current state testing, but also previous years. So, they can dig down into that. If parents have questions about that, please reach out to me or either building and we'd be happy to walk you through your students' results and take questions and in a way I can help to, so we can understand the results. Be happy to do that. All that information is there. And the last part that I have there is our Title I Summer School. So, our Title I Summer School is up and ready to go. Details are there. It's going to start on July 8th. It runs for 12 days, four weeks, three, three times a week. So, we have great enrollment. We have 105 students enrolled as of now, so that's, that's great, wonderful. We want families to use this program. We want students to come in in the summer. It's a blend of targeted math and reading support, small group instruction, and also just socializing with, with some of their peers in the summer so that they, you know, that have the chance to do that with small groups and the teachers support that as well. So, we have a great summer planned, and I'm happy that all those families have decided to join us. We have transportation to and from, and we have breakfast and lunch provided as well. So, it's a great opportunity for families. Thank you to the teachers who are going to be here this summer making that happen. Some of them are here tonight. So, are there any questions about any of that? No? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Special Services Report.
Good evening. I'm going to kick off my report with just a report on the annual Memorial Fishing Derby. Much fun was had by all. We had lots of kids touching fish and poking at them and catching them. There was lots of smiles, sunshine, and quite a bit of fish, which is great. You can tell some of these kids maybe haven't touched or seen a fish that close. So, that was great. Just thank you to the Sanderson family. We can't thank them enough. That was an amazing, amazing event that day. An update on the Indicator 8 Parent Involvement Survey. The survey closed on May 23rd. On Thursday, May 29th, there was a state call for all special ed directors in which SAU 21 got a shout-out from the New Hampshire DOE for a big increase in parent responses. So, thanks to all the parents in Seabrook and across the district that participated in that survey. Planning for next year is in, in the works and continuing. Educational assistant assignments are done, and so, staff will receive those tentative assignments tomorrow. Of course, we say tentative in case we get new move-ins or students move out or things change over the summer. But they'll know what the expectation is for them as they, as they leave for the school year. Extended school year staffing and planning has been completed. We are running the same dates and times as the Title I program. And so, that's again July 7th to July 30th. And then just, I think, you know, as the year wraps up, there's always so many people that you want to thank on behalf of our students. So, just generally, just thank you to the staff who worked tirelessly for not just the special ed students, but every student here in Seabrook. And thank you so much to the families that have partnered with us and are, you know, doing all the things at home to support the learning that's happening here at school. And then just the last thing, if you're keeping track, we are at 295 IEP team meetings thus far. All right, any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Finance Report, our favorite.
Thank you. I'll keep it brief. So, we are on the final home stretch for the fiscal year. Both the year-to-date expenditure and revenue reports are uploaded on Board Docs for review. We, as alluded to earlier, we are very tight on the expenditure side. We have approximately $20,000 in available funds. On the revenue side, we, we're anticipating we should finish, like I said earlier, approximately $50,000 in surplus. Revenue may be up to 60. These figures already include the withdrawal from the Building Management as expendable trust for the boiler work we had conducted earlier this year. So, so we are expecting that we will stay in budget through the end of the, the school year, seeing as how we, we are only a few weeks away. However, you know, we, we, things happen, so we always have to prepare for the unanticipated. But I, I am confident that we will finish up the, the year in, in budgets, you know, with a relatively thin margin. Thank you.
Any questions from Matt? I'm seeing, yeah. Moving on to continuing business, Legal Counsel. You had asked me to reach out to Mr. Sasa or Attorney Sasa. And when we need him for the deliberative session or anything like that, he is willing to assist us in that matter, what matters. I did speak with him, so we're all set there. And then moving on to school improvement, Portrait of a Learner Update.
I think Colleen's going to go first.
Who's going first?
I think Colleen.
Okay, there's the beautiful kayaks we talked about and the eighth graders. First is our academic goal. Every student will annually achieve at least one year's worth of growth in each current subject, which would be ELA and math. Some of this is going to be a little redundant. Obviously, you realize that we have a wit and wisdom program, and it is aligned to the Common Core standards. It's also supported by the science of reading, which is current research that supports, you know, the types of programs you should use for literacy. We're happy that all grade levels piloted one module. Sixth grade piloted three of the four modules. The teams meet every other week. They share best practices. They meet with the literacy coach. They also problem solve. She does observations with them, gives them feedback. The, the nice thing about this is they're able to, you know, when you have a new program and you're piloting it, pacing is always an issue, maybe some concerns of what can I leave out, what can I use? So, there's been some really rich dialogues between the ELA team themselves, as long as it's been, well, with the literacy coach and the curriculum director. So, we will, at the end of next year, our intention is to, you know, you can't just pilot a program for a year and then see how effective it is. So, we're going to have a year-two pilot using additional modules for grade levels. And then we will share with you at the end of the year, the thoughts of the staff. We'll kind of look at the data and see, we'll evaluate how effective is wit and wisdom for our students, for our teachers, and for our school. And we really appreciate the teachers kind of leaping in this year for a really rigorous program that they had to do a lot of work over the summer in planning. And we applaud their efforts, and we hope it will turn into success for students. We have no doubt it will. This looks at our, I'm going to show you some charts that show math achievement. The goal is that we have one year's of growth in math and in ELA. I want you to be cognizant of fact, this is fall to winter. And if you look at the bumps that each grade level made, with the exception of one, they exceeded their mid-year goals. So, our students and our staff did a lot of work in a short amount of time to help improve across grade levels achievement, which is basically our goal as a school. We're always looking to close the achievement gap, students show growth. And that data point is really important for us and for our staff when we're planning, planning for students.
And Colleen, if I can jump in, this slide is showing the achievement of students that are at the highest achievement levels. So, not just at the, you know, grade level, but this is showing students who achieved math above the 60th percentile, which, you know, some of them are at 60, some 70, some even 80. So, you can see there that the number really grew. So, not only is the growth happening, but the achievement is also falling. So, it's, it's really phenomenal that that's happening.
Thanks. And you have to keep in mind that 58th percentile is the median. So, whenever you can exceed above the median, it's always good news for us. The next slide, which will show you our math growth, the last one is achievement. This is from three of the four grade levels showed above the 60th percentile. Kids are growing at a good rate. And if you look at the data from NEWA, there's a high correlation to how students score in NEWA. Could correlate hopefully to our SAS scores and the improvement that they'll show. And that's, that's one of the reasons we use NEWA.
And when kids score, you know, when the growth is above the 60th percentile, we're closing gaps of achievement because the median growth is at the 50th percentile. That means they stay where they are. That's their expected growth. But if they're growing above the 60th percentile, now we're doing more than a year's worth of growth in a year's time. We're closing gaps of achievement. So, this is phenomenal data here for math.
So, if you want to know anything about NEWA, call Mary. She's the girl who...
I love her.
The next is example... The next is example of our reading achievement, similar to the math, with the exception of one grade level. Students are showing achievement from the sixty-first to the hundredth percentile. You also have to recognize, the higher you are on the scale, the harder it, the harder it is to achieve, because kids are at a high level. But our kids are doing a really good job. And SAS data, we just finished up, so we'll give you a report in the fall to kind of say, you know, how, how did their achievement in NEWA match with their achievement in SAS? And we're hopeful that you're gonna see a lot of great bumps. Lot of words here, but we've dramatically achieved achievement in reading and math from fall to winter. Just think about that time span. They come in the fall or winter in a short amount of time. Students and staff have done a great job in that. Half the students in grades eight posted their scores above the grade level in reading, which is great as they enter Winnicott High School. In math, nearly eighty percent of students in grades six, seven, and eight exceeded their growth targets, and they're closing the achievement gap of more than one year, which is a really hard thing to do. Especially if the gap is pretty wide, the, the, the more we can close it, the better students are. In reading, fifty to seventy-three percent of students in grades six, seven, and eight exceeded their growth targets, and they also are closing the achievement gap from one year. And I'll kind of speak to it in another slide, what we think some of the reasoning behind that is.
I'm gonna just close public comment at five forty-one.
A continued academic goal is that they will participate in competency-based academic learning opportunities, allow them to have voice and choice. We had, we had six cycles of RAM intervention facilitated by the teachers and the interventionist. We also had a little bit of a math club at the end of the year after school to help support students in math. And our goal is, we wanna accelerate those kids who are on or above grade level, and we wanna provide intervention. How do teachers do that? They look at a lot of data sources. They look at NEWA, they look at Acadia's, they look at past SAS scores. They also look at any kind of grade level interventions that they use, formative, summative. They work really hard in their grade level team meetings when they look at those multiple sources of data and not just one source to make a decision of how do we put kids in groups, who should be in what group. Sometimes kids need both. They need ELA and math, and so then they make the decision of, you know, which, which intervention is gonna be best suited to them. And that's what our RAM block is meant for. And it's all hands on deck during that time. And the beauty of that is they've, they're able to, like, really personalize instruction for students in a smaller setting. And what they've done is, this year, I think they've done a phenomenal job of setting goals with kids. In the page where we talked about mindset, there's gonna be an example of a goals sheet that a teacher was able to share with me and what it looked like and what kind of conversations they have with kids. So I think the more that you continue the conversation with students about, it's important, it's important to set goals for yourself, for school, for life, or outside of school, because that's kind of something you do from now until, you know, eternally. You're always setting goals for yourself. And students, one of the staff members, we're gonna quote them, said, "I noticed that students seem more interested and invested in their testing after goal-setting with them, and it seems to have helped motivate them." So I think, you know, it's nice when you can motivate them to set high goals. It's even more beautiful when they achieve it and they get to see what that looks like. You know, we have advisory every day. It's twenty-five minutes, a small group, two of the days. Per the conversation that we have with the school board was to, like, set goals and talk about using their agenda book, what are their homework assignments, you know, what are you working on this week? We continue to see the advocacy of that. We also talk about positive social development. Middle school is a time in kids' life when they're trying to figure out who they are, who their friends are, who their friends aren't. It's really about relationships that the staff have with them. And we're able to use the Kering School Community Curriculum along with some other curriculums that the teachers kind of use on their own, either by some PD they've attended that they feel is effective. Probably looks very different grade level to grade level. Some grade levels hold family meetings. They talk to the kids and say, "Hey, this is going really well." Or, "We're a little concerned about, you know, what's going on at recess." Or they also celebrate kids. Besides our RAM rally, they do shout-outs to kids who are doing a good job. And I think when you celebrate kids and they feel a sense of belonging, then they're gonna come to school and they're gonna be on task. So that goal also speaks to, like, we wanna decrease the amount of kids that are absent, because we too, and when we get to our data, we too, like Tim, have a good amount of kids who are not in attendance daily, which is a problem. And when they, when they can meet with a small group and a teacher, they feel like they belong. So we appreciate that work. So this is another mindset. We have our RAM rally that everybody loves every month. They love the games, they love the awards. Teachers get up and they read about who they chose, why they chose that student. It's a positive way to highlight all the social and academic good work that's going on at Seabrook. We also had our counselors this year. We have two counselors, Seabrook Mental Health, Ian Haley Parsons. They spent some time, they'd like to do a little bit more of it next year, talking to kids about bullying, about self-regulation, or how do you solve conflict? The classroom teachers do a great job of doing that, but they also need some support with that. And so it was good that we were able to target grade levels. We started with our sixth graders. And they spent some time talking about, you know, what does it mean to be, you know, a self-regulated human being? What does it mean to be able to solve a conflict that you have with a peer that's, you know, happened at recess or happened in the hallway? So they did some workshops with the students, and we appreciate the work that they did with that. Students created goals about NEWA and SAS. That is an example. I know it's a little hard to read, but if you kind of look at it, the teacher really gave some specificity and feedback to the kid. Slow down, annotate, elaborate, put more details. So they sat down with them, the staff, and they talked, "Here's what you got before. Here's what your goal should be. How are you gonna get there? What are some strategies you can use?" Because for some kids, testing is stressful. They get really nervous. They think they can't do it. They forget what they were gonna do. They forget what they learned. And we know that absolutely they're capable of it. And then just a conversation about what are you gonna do when you take NEWA? When you take SAS? And so the goal is targeted just to that individual student. That student went from two or three, which they met their goal. And I was told the parent was, like, really happy to see progress over time when the student knew what they needed to work on and how did they get there. So every grade level was able to do that. I just gave you one sample. All the grade levels did that with our students. And I think the impact speaks volumes. Essential life skills. We would like all students to be able to experience a visual college and some career goals. We talk about advisory. We, these, one thing that we have to keep in mind is this is a three- to five-year plan. So here's some of the things we've done. And, you know, in the next two, three, four, five years, we will be able to accomplish all the things that we set out as our goals. Advisory talks about goal-setting with students in future, future. We're really fortunate that Lawrence de Constant has made all these connections with all UNAC's grant, Seabrook Camp and Estuary, worked with the scientists. Really happy that Mission Kid, Kid, Kid can come and talk to our eighth graders. Like, here's what high school looks like. Here's what your schedule looks like. Here's what you can expect. Our intention next year is that we will bring students to visit our college, visit SST, and also visit a junior college, and then talk to them about trades, trades. Because they need to start thinking about now. So that's our goal with that. Always try to decrease referrals for discipline and increase attendance. Our absences decreased by seventy percent. We still have a pretty large amount of absences. We have a attendance team. We meet, we talk about who do we need to call? Who do we need to send a letter to? Who does a counselor need to speak with? How can we support a family for kids who are chronically absent? And then how do we decrease suspension rates? We decreased it by fifty-nine percent over last year and decreased attentions by eight percent. When we get to the safety report, I'll give you those exact numbers. But our goal is always to get kids to school and hopefully support them in the needs that they have. Mental wellness. All the traffic, all the staff is trained in CPI. At the beginning of the year, we're really lucky. We have a B C B A who spans both schools. She does a phenomenal job in helping to support two sides of the school. And she did some CPI training with us. We also had Seacoast Mental Health came out during one of our staff days and talked to staff about, you know, strategies you can use with kids who are reluctant learners, who are struggling in school. They also came and met with grade level teams and gave them, you know, some ideas, suggestions, strategies to help kids that are, that are struggling with conflict, conflict with their peers, conflict at home, conflict with their teachers. So, you know, we've done a little bit of that. We obviously would like to expand upon that. At the end of the day, kids need to feel a sense of belonging, and you'll see a really exhaustive list on the right-hand side of all the opportunities that they have here. Couple that we didn't mention were SAS. They have that opportunity there. And then Spirit Week this year was initiated by students, so they planned that. And then the eighth graders have their own little Spirit Week. Communicating, communicating is key, you know? We're always looking for suggestions from people. We have parents, we, not everyone has signed up. It'd be great if we get everybody to sign up for that. We have school messenger, which is the messages that, you know, I will send out for my communication. The grade level teachers are great. I actually got some feedback about two weeks ago from a parent who said, "I love the grade level newsletter." Because they get pictures, they get websites, they get information, they get questions, they have up-and-coming events. So we encourage parents to continue to look at that. We started a parent advisory. We have phenomenal PTO. These women do more than I can even imagine for our school. And we, we kind of wanna help support that by adding an advisory. We had a couple of meetings this year. The parent was the one who initiated the adopt the Seabrook beach. So we adopted part of the beach. Had two clean-ups. First one, we only had nine pounds of trash. And the last one, we had several pounds of trash. So I would say that the more people go to the beach, because we're gonna do this in the summer, we'll set some dates out when we're gonna meet, the more trash we're going to be collecting. So we appreciate that that was initiated by a parent. Our intention is, how do we get out to the community? How do we get the community to know all the good work that everybody here is doing? And that's kind of, you know, a little step in that direction. We hope to expand that next year. Another way we communicate is, you know, having our students tell the message of what's going on. And, you know, the two gentlemen tonight are a great example of, you know, here's what's happening at Seabrook Middle School. And we would, next year, like to have an Alice night for parents. We had one. We didn't have a lot of people there. We did appreciate the chief coming. And I think parents need to know that we have a lot of drills, we have a lot of things going on, and what does that really look like and mean for our students so that you feel that they're safe when they come to school? And the last one is next steps. Obviously, this is not an exhaustive list. It's, you know, here's some things we wanna do based on what we just talked here about. Hopefully Title I funding. We don't know what that is gonna look like right now. Hopefully, it's level-funded at least. We like to target math support. We hear everybody saying that, you know, there is a need for math support, particularly when kids transition from fifth grade, from fourth grade into fifth grade, and then fifth grade into sixth grade. Whit and Wisdom, as you already know, we're gonna add some modules next year. We're gonna look at the data longitudinally and see, you know, are we getting the bumps we need? I think the slides we showed you already evidence we are getting bumps. So, and it's a pilot, so next year, obviously, we're gonna have more data available for you. Mindsets. We intend to partner with the Brown Center, use some of our title money to foster a culture of positive choices. Kids taking risks, adults taking risks. We're gonna do some PD with our staff with the Brown Center. And then our intention is, the Brown Center will come to Seabrook Middle School and work with students. We're gonna have a school-wide career day. Seventh grade typically has had a career day. They do a phenomenal job, but we think it shouldn't just be seventh grade. We should expand that out to other grade levels so kids understand, here's a future career you have. They get to have lunch with the scientists, but there's a lot more out there in the world. So if any of you have friends or if any of you would like to speak, next year, the Career Day, we will welcome you and invite you to that. I already mentioned about the eighth graders visiting those sites to think about, you know, do I wanna go to college? Do I, do I wanna go to trade? Just letting them see what the possibility is out. Next year, we would like to start a National Junior Arts Society. We have an art society. We would like to have those students who are getting ready to go to high school be a part of the National Junior Arts Society. We already have a staff member who said they would be interested in facilitating, so we're excited about that. And then lastly, we are going to create an MTSFB team to talk about students' physical, mental health and wellness. And we're not done. We have more work to do, as we all know. So that's kind of a snapshot of what happened this year. Questions?
I think it was wonderful, and thank you for the graph, the graphics on these kids' growth and how wonderful they've done. Because, you know, you hear about me recently, you know, when we talk about numbers, it's always negative. It's always, you know, we're below this, or we're not doing as well as the other school. But when we look at it, we, we are, our children are growing so much within this small timeframe, and they should be congratulated for all their hard work and as well as all of yours.
Well, the teachers should be congratulated.
Well, that's what I mean, as all, as well as yours. But, you know, it's just so good to see our kids growing. We need to put that positive, that positive stuff out there.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Dr. Jomie for the graphs. She's just, she's, she's the graphs lady.
I love the data.
It's not my, it's not my jam. So I do appreciate that. Yeah, and I think that, you know, one of the math teachers said something to me the other day. He said, you know, the gap can be wide, but as, it's hard to close a large gap, but we are closing the gap. And I think we need to celebrate that when we think about, you know, students' growth and achievement. Are we where we wanna be? Of course, we're not where we wanna be, but like, we can see it closing and narrowing. I think that's the goal-setting that kids have done. I think that's the curriculum that we're using. I think that's the PD that the teachers are actively engaged at in the conversations. So thank you.
Thank you.
I probably might just wanna say something too, if you don't mind. On the slide that shows eight percent, seven percent grade five and math achievement, I think there must be a conversation, I'm sure, going on between the elementary and middle school, because that's a, that's a really, that's a tough thing. If the grade that low would achieve.
It is a tough thing.
I, I don't know that that speaks to where they finished fourth grade necessarily. But I agree, we all, we all can do better, for sure. Yeah.
That, if that was a more objective, a positive.
Keep in mind, that's not proficiency, that's not grade level. Those are kids at the highest level of achievement, right? Sixty-first percentile on up. So it's, it is lower in, in fifth grade, yeah. There's work to do in the fifth grade.
So the fourth grade team will be So the fourth grade team will be meeting. Um, and the students will leave and the teachers are here for two more days. The intention is, Tim and Colleen and Josh and I have spoken, you know, that fourth grade will meet with fifth grade. And, um, we're trying to make the transition as easy as possible for them. We, we had the fifth grade parents here in the night to kind of explain what does it look like when your child goes from one classroom, one teacher, everything, to, you know, multiple classrooms going down the hall. So we, you know, every year we'll get better at doing that and, um, those conversations. Interventionists will be having conversations, grade level teachers will be having conversations. So.
Yeah, it's such a hard job.
It's a tough job?
Yeah.
It's not easy anywhere.
Thank you so much. Um, I just really appreciate the consistency that we have too, um, especially with both of you. And, um, you know, we still want to meet with the teachers. The board still wants to meet with the teachers and, um, so that we can all be on the same page. I think that's so important and to have a positive outlook on everything and just have positivity instead of negativity. And I just think that we can grow so much more if we all work together and be the village that we are. But thank you. Um. I, I guess we're moving on to elementary.
Awesome. So we'll go through our goals for this year, um, give you an update on if we met those goals or not. Spoiler, a lot of our goals are the same as the middle school, um, but not all of them. So really just first thing we'll do is look at what our goals were and what those outcomes were for this year. And then we'll dive in to each of the pillars of our plan here. So. Those are our five goals centered around academics, mindsets, physical, mental wellness, community engagement, and essential life skills. Um, it's still slightly early, just like with the school safety data. We're wrapping up assessments and we have some makeups happening, um, right now. But the preliminary data does not look like we've met our academic goal. But we'll get into maybe some of the whys in a moment here. But our school felt, our team felt confident that we did meet the goals that we had set for the other four areas. So that's something to celebrate there. And so for academics, the goal being just like SMS, that every student would achieve at least one year of growth in math and reading, or ELA. Um, this is what we are looking at currently from fall to spring. So our assessment that we use, that K through four uses is a cadence. We use NWA as well, just like the middle school, but that is only used two, three, and four. So to give a snapshot, I personally like NWA better, but this is a, the best snapshot of school-wide data. Um, and so what we're seeing, and this is just one assessment tool. And so we'll oftentimes remind teachers, it's just one assessment. It's not the be all and all, doesn't, doesn't mean everything, but it does give us information that is important. And so what we're seeing based on this assessment was, I know it's very small up there, but ultimately the, the bar graphs that you see start on the left with kindergarten and go up to grade four. The gray bar graph, the, the gray bar is, um, just beginning of the year data. And then that colored bar is their spring score. Um, and so we saw scores go down in reading in grades two through four. Again, just on this assessment. And then we saw scores go down in, in math in K to one. But then every grade did make growth in one subject. Um, and so this is again, just early data that is, is giving us indication that we did not meet that goal of every student achieving one full year of growth.
Yeah, I also think it's important to point out that when you are introducing new programs, that that is pretty normal, right? That's why we say it takes three to five years of consistency with implementation to really see growth results with programs. Um, teachers need time to learn the material. They're educating students about how to use it. It, it's three years before they really hit their stride.
And we're down to leading interventions, correct, as well, so.
I will say that the math, the math scores that you see, especially two through four, in those dips in K one could have been because of a, a student maybe moving in or out of that grade too. So we have to keep that in mind. But, um, here we are at the end of year three and then doing a, a solid math program. And I think this is a result of that, some of those gains that we're seeing. Our teachers have the materials to be effective. Um, and, and they don't have to pull from Teachers Pay Teachers or all these different places. And I think that's a piece of why we saw solid growth in math. Uh, but I agree with, like Meredith said, year one of implementing a new program, there's going to be a lot of time and effort going into, to doing that and refining what that looks like. Um, but those are the, again, the early statistics for achievement.
Just for clarity, so two, three, and four, this would be their third year of the new math program, solid?
Yes.
We started it three years ago?
Yep.
And they're doing well. And then two, three, and four are the only grades that are doing a new reading curriculum?
Correct. So as we said, we, we felt like we met our goal for mindsets. And so that was done, um, in a number of ways. But one thing that stood out was Playworks helping us. Really, one, one big thing was a school-wide conflict resolution strategy that kids would use. And so when there's a small, more minor disagreement about, you know, "I was here first," or "you cut me in line," rock, paper, scissors. They refer to it as rock it out, just one round of rock, paper, scissors for some of those more small disagreements. We saw kids doing that as soon as day one after implementing. And so it's just, just a simple thing that seems like a, an easy thing to do, but we're, we're doing it. And then it, we're seeing the impact of that because that data you see over there, again, sorry, it's so small. The, the green bar is May and everything before that is the rest of the school year. So this refers to incidents during recess. And so we have seen, except for February, because we were inside for most of that month and had vacation and it was very cold, a lot of indoor recess. Our recess incidents have dropped significantly. And I, I do say Playworks is a big part of that. Um, but also the, the things that kids are doing to be able to, to get us there. So kids are more, um, active at recess and we'll get into that in the next slide as well. Um, but it's just great to see kids work through problems together. And instead of, you know, having to always get the teacher for everything. Yeah. So our next. Physical and mental wellness. Again, through Playworks, we definitely felt like we achieved this goal, um, which was students cultivating a healthy lifestyle, making well-informed, well-rounded choices. It was very evident to some of our staff who have been helping out with recess for many years that, um, nearly a hundred percent of our kids are actively playing at recess. We don't have that, you know, random twenty-five percent of kids that don't know what to do, that are just kind of wandering around the playground. Um, and sometimes the imaginative games are not always the best that they maybe come up with on their own. So, um, we've seen, again, that, that increase in engagement during recess has been huge. The month of May, we brought back the morning mile, which is just an awesome way to get outside, start the day, get the blood flowing and, and the science behind that, um, for how it impacts learning is tremendous. And then last, just throughout the year, our anti-bullying campaigns, whether it was Mrs. West scheduling our, um, tiger assembly, um, or the classroom visits that Mr. Han does throughout the year. Um, we're just constantly trying to be proactive with that. Um, so yeah, that's how we met that goal. And then community engagement. So this, sorry, it's in yellow and you probably can't read that. But this is really a student-centered goal around community engagement. So it says, "Students will successfully participate in service opportunities that give them opportunities to create the change that they want to see in the world." So the ways we met that goal, one big thing that stood out to me were, um, Michael Gotrow, our fantastic librarian, school librarian. She has led throughout the year different student-led passion projects, um, clubs and things. And one that really stood out to me was the kindness box. That some of, some of our fourth graders just came up with that idea on their own. And so there's a small picture of it there that you can see. Um, but that was just a really powerful thing to see. Um, and it's still out there by the, uh, the water fountain of the elementary school art room before you go into the cafeteria. Um, so feel free to check that out. And there are so many other examples of that that we could spend hours talking about. But it's really just great to see kids develop, developing their interests and just doing projects and, and making the change that they want to see. Um, I would say our Playworks junior coaches has also helped us achieve this goal. That was just really powerful work. And we actually had a, a meeting today with our coach from Playworks, met with our junior coaches that really kind of just debrief on how the year went. Um, and started talking about next year. So that was a really just great opportunity to see those student leaders develop. And then our student exhibition night again was a hit. Um, and a shout out to our wonderful music teacher, um, Mrs. O'Brien, who's put on just the best concerts I've ever seen at an elementary school. Um, and that's several nights throughout the year that she dedicates to doing that. And so, yeah, it's all, all great examples of, of how we met that goal. And then the last one is essential life skills. So students will demonstrate essential life skills and competencies aligned with life and career pathways following grade-specific milestones. And so really through the help of the PTO, making it possible, we were able, as a school, we were able to go on twenty-three field trips total, which is way more than I've seen, um, in other places. And I think it's just given our kids an opportunity to get out, see the world, see their community. Um, and there's just so many life skills that developed as a result of that. And I think those are the, the core memories that will travel with our students for years to come. Um, and so we're going to continue to make it a goal to have a lot of field trips and, and make them meaningful and have them really be centered on these life skills. And so again, thank you to the PTO for helping make that possible. Any questions on any of what you've seen so far? So looking ahead, we're thinking we would like to enhance our goals, make them stronger. Um, but something that we do with our teachers when we're setting goals with our staff, um, is we set SMART goals. And so it makes sense for our, our goals as a school to be SMART goals. And so that's just an acronym that stands for specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-bound. Uh, so what we did is we took current goals and ma- really turned them into SMART goals so that we are able to measure those. Um, it's also important that those are, are achievable goals as well. That we're not, we're keeping the bar high, but we're making sure that they are achievable. Um, and so what that looks like. So you can see it in the, the gray text there is our goal from this year. And then the goal for next year would be to increase the percentage of students performing at or above grade level in core academic areas, ELA and math, while also increasing the percentage of students meeting expected growth of at least one year. So going really back to a lot of what Colleen was talking about, about closing those gaps. If we increase every year, the percentage of students that are meeting their expected growth, but also the percentage of students on grade level, over time, those proficiency scores will be what we want them to be. Um, so I, I see this as a, a more realistic goal that we will be able to, to measure and report back on. And hopefully we'll be able to say we met this goal in three hundred and sixty-five days from now. The next is mindsets. So again, taking this year's goal and looking to enhance it, make it more specific. For this one, we'd like to see a hundred percent of our students develop proficiency in at least four out of five of the CARES competencies. So proficiency would be a three or a four on the report card. I will probably add that in, in there. But, um, those competencies are on the report card. Those are, um, they've been there as long as I've been there. And, um, it's a good way for us to, to really track that information as well. So it's a, another one that is, we'll be able to really report back on whether we met that goal or not. Um, and it makes sense to use something that we're already measuring and reporting on. And so these are typically taught through fly five lessons. And that's the curriculum that we have, um, to teach these skills. And it's, it's one that I feel is very strong and we have great resources for, for helping our kiddos get here. But it's important to remember, a lot of this work too, is, is very important to teach. And not everyone just knows how to cooperate or assert themselves or have empathy. So, um, so that's our plan for mindsets. Physical and mental wellness, again, just making it more specific. We'd like to see, uh, a hundred percent of our students engaging in at least three hours of physical activity weekly. And for the, more of the mental wellness side of it, participate in, in setting personal goals once every trimester. So a lot like Colleen was talking about was setting those math, reading goals. Um, we'll be having teachers really working with students and tracking that. Um, but goals have helped me my whole life. And I think that's, again, just something that maybe needs to be taught. So we're going to put an emphasis on that next year as well. And then. Our community engagement goal. A hundred percent of students will participate in at least one service learning project, presentation, performance, concert, or similar engagement activity. Um, so again, just really taking the, the goal from this year and making it more specific. And finally, essential life skills. We would like to see a hundred percent of students participate in at least two field trips, complete a minimum of ones, the incentive project or activity per trimester. So three for the, the whole year related to those essential life skills you see on the slide. And that's just a, a view of all of our updated goals for next year. And that pretty much sums it up. So we're, next steps from here will be working with our team leaders, our admin team, to, to really hash out how we're going to get there and what those action steps are going to be to ensure that we do meet all five goals next year. Um, we have a lot of ideas, uh, but that's what we hope to, to report back to you all on in August or September and beginning of the year, how we're going to get there.
The playgroup seems like one of the best things that we've done.
Yeah.
Playworks.
Playworks, yeah. I'm going to start doing that with my kids when they fight. Like rock, paper, scissors. Don't even talk to me with rock, paper, scissors. No, I love it. And, um, thank you for this report, Tim.
Yes. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, moving on to wit and wisdom pilot.
Hi, everybody again. Um, a lot of listening, so if anyone need to stretch. But no, for, for our wit and wisdom, um, update, I thought that it would be nice to get some teacher voices, which you can see in the report. So we got those, um, kind of feedback from teachers by a teacher survey that we sent out, a literacy survey was sent out to all the teachers that, um, teach literacy in both buildings. And so we were able to kind of garner their feedback around all kinds of programming. But one of the things that we looked at was our wit and wisdom pilot. So you have quotes there directly from teachers in both elementary and middle school that describe their experience using wit and wisdom this year. And also, um, work in our literacy team at the middle school with our consultant, Sarah Sharilla. And really kind of gathering up feedback from teachers that are on the ground, working with the curriculum every day with our students and where are they at. It would be nice for you to hear, hear that. And when we're looking at that, you can see in their comments, there's highlights for sure in the curriculum. And then there's also a learning curve that we talked about that showed up in our data, possibly in the elementary school. And the learning curve really is something that we want to work on for next year. Some part of that is how do we differentiate this curriculum? Some part of that is how do we differentiate this curriculum? It's a very rigorous curriculum, which is fantastic. It's exposing students to grade level text and really raising the bar as far as building their background knowledge, vocabulary development, comprehension. But we also know within that, there are students that maybe can't meet that challenge. So for next year, part of our goal is to really differentiate this curriculum, which means take the curriculum that we have and use our pacing, how fast or how slow we move within different lessons, and also the materials. What do they look like? How are they scaffolded for students? Can all students access the curriculum? Either that's by creating, building their background knowledge in the vocabulary before the module, or building on an elementary, for instance, building on their foundational reading skills. So that different part of the day, in elementary school, students can be working on those reading skills that we saw in the data that Tim presented in the SIT plan, so that they can access the curriculum. So some part of this pilot is making sure that all students can access the curriculum. So we saw that all throughout the year. As you're trying to learn a new curriculum, there's so many parts and pieces to it that for next year, I'm really hopeful that we can dig into that part of the curriculum, which is that scaffold piece. And it is there and provided for us in wit and wisdom. Teachers worked very hard this year. Grades two through eight dug in. I can't tell you the amount of time before school, after school, and over the summer, they took time to prepare to teach it. But even then, while you're teaching something new, you're learning things as you go. So for next year, that pacing and that differentiation is going to be, I think, a lot smoother in both buildings. We're hoping to see that. And so kind of reflecting on the difference between elementary and middle school, for our elementary students, those foundational reading skills are so essential to access to this curriculum, but also to other parts of their academic career. So those foundational skills are something that we're going to really focus on for next year alongside the wit and wisdom pilot, right? So that we can provide different materials for our elementary teachers next year. We know what the gaps are. We've dug into the data. We've taken the time. We're going to do that with our literacy team next week. We have a literacy team that met all year. That was a team that was representative of kindergarten through eighth grade. All those voices together have met all year. We're closing up next week together on Wednesday, the day after teachers get out. So they're heroes for coming an extra day. And we're going to talk through literacy program, programming through the lens of data. So we're really going to get their feedback on the year as well. So using data to tell the story, I think, is really important when you're looking at a pilot. That's why at the end of next year, we're going to be able to have a deeper look at both elementary and middle. So that for the elementary is more focused on foundational skills. And then for the middle school, next year, we're going to make sure that our, all the grade levels teach multiple modules. So as Colleen mentioned earlier, for the middle school this year, we had sixth grade teach three modules and the other teachers in five, seven, and eight taught one module. Our intention was to have them all teach one. Then our sixth grade language arts teacher said she was really motivated to try to teach all three. Well, for next year, all of those teachers are going to be teaching multiple modules. And that way we have even a deeper look at the content, first of all, but also the instructional methods. How are we going to kind of team up together and share, you know, share the wealth of resources that the teachers have? The middle school, they're fortunate this year to have been able to meet twice a month as a vertical team, which means that your ELA teachers sit together twice a month, your math teachers sit together twice a month, and so on. It was really critical this year for the vertical team and the middle school to meet and to really lean on each other for this pilot. I want to just commend both the, both teachers in both buildings for, again, for the work and the collaborative kind of spirit that they came into this with. And that's what it really takes is that extra curiosity. They were in both buildings, just so invested and curious about how this was going to impact our students. And we're also hopeful that we are going to see an impact, positive impact, as we dig further into it next year. So I don't know if anyone has any specific questions or anything around that.
So you said five through eight are increasing. Will they all be doing the same number of modules?
Um, it.
Or like vary by grade?
Yeah, it might vary by grade, but we're shooting for three modules per grade and one grade might vary.
And then what would piloting look like in elementary if there's continuation of this? But then it sounds like additional work around foundations.
Yes, exactly. So for instance, in our third grade, so for instance, so in the elementary school, grades two, three, and four taught three modules each. So they had full capacity of all the modules for wit and wisdom. But third grade didn't have what we call GOs, which is, which is a leveled reader that goes along with wit and wisdom. They will have that for next year. So they can incorporate that into their reading time with kids. Second grade did have that. And there isn't one for fourth grade. A GO is for fourth grade with the company. But we are going to have third grade score this GOs for next year as a way to integrate more leveled, they're leveled readers, to integrate those materials into wit and wisdom, in the hopes that that will really help. The other, the other part of it is using our boost time in other times of the day that teachers are teaching foundations, really tightening up those foundational skills, which we can possibly better utilize those times of the day. And that's again, something that we can get feedback from the teachers and also our literacy team on. And then the pacing. So pacing in the elementary and middle, but speaking now to elementary, the pacing of a new curriculum, in other words, how quickly you move through material, is so hard to get right in the first year. I mean, it's really, it's a challenge. So one of the things that we're, that we're working on is creating pacing guides for those teachers. So fourth grade already has a pacing guide that they created with Sarah Sharilla two weeks ago. And we'll do the same thing with third and second. And then possibly, you know, middle has pacing guides of their own. But that pacing guide is something that can move, as they move through multiple modules, then they're able to meet the expectation of the program. But if you, if your pacing doesn't meet that, then by the end of the year, potentially the students haven't received the goal module. So next year, we're really hoping that, well, that's the goal, not hoping, that is what we're going to achieve, is that those students can move through those modules at a pace that works. You know, a rhythm and a pace that works for the students and for the teachers. So that's, if we get more detailed, that's, that's what I think the elementary will be working on for those teachers. And that comes from teacher feedback and just working with them this year. And again, no one's fault. It's just the nature of learning, learning something new, working really hard to learn it.
I do think, if you don't mind if I.
No, again, of course.
It's important to note that two very different worlds, middle and elementary, right? And I think we have 12 teachers teaching wit and wisdom, maybe compared to the four. And so in terms of coaching, we had one coach that was available, but I think the coaching was a little bit spread. And so that's something that we've reflected on. But also I'll just note that for a middle school teacher, if you were to give them wit and wisdom, if you're giving them almost 100% of what they need to teach literacy effectively to a middle school student, if you give wit and wisdom to an elementary school's teacher, it's not 100% of what they need to be an effective teacher. Just for their whole day, but not, not just that, but for literacy too. And so that's where pulling in other things like foundations. I think there's, sometimes there's a lot, kind of a lot going on, right? And so I just point that out because they are two very different worlds. And again, it's only really teaching, teaching a beginning reader is much different than teaching a fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth grader. And the science behind that, it's not just willy nilly, we do what we feel like is right. There's real research behind how the brain works and how we're supposed to be teaching reading. I can't say confidently that we have all of the best materials and resources to do that right now. And I don't, I think wit and wisdom is great. I don't think that's, that's the problem necessarily. But if we're asking kids to do things that they're not quite ready for, that time could be better spent maybe filling in some of those skills, right, that, to help them, right? One last thing I'll say is that, that the whole science of reading conversation that you maybe hear is, it's not a new conversation, but it's certainly got a lot of traction recently. And to become a licensed teacher right now, you have to take what's called the Foundations of Reading test to prove that basically you know how to teach reading. And that's not a test that, that's about 10 years old. And so that's something that a lot of college programs have not taught educators. And I think it's, it's happening now. But it's kind of crazy to me to think that even myself, I took a class on how to teach math, how to teach music, but never how to teach reading to kids. And so we're very, our admin team and Lauren, we're very set on making sure that our teachers get that professional development next year. There's a very rich course called Letters. And it's, of course, that a lot of educators have taken in New Hampshire and is, just gets really good feedback in terms of the knowledge that they're going to gain with regards to teaching reading and all the science behind it. So I just point that out there because I think it's, wit and wisdom is a piece of what we need really to be successful.
And I'll add, this is new, it's not new to us to know that we needed this training. Unfortunately, we did not get the opportunity to apply for a grant that would have supported that. So we've been trying to piece it together with the resources that we have.
Right. And I, in anticipation of thinking this conversation might come up, I just printed a graphic that everybody talks about and it's called the reading rope. But it's spoken about so much when we talk about the science of reading that Tim was talking about, what we're going to train teachers on. Again, this wasn't in the past with Colleen, but it always comes up with Tim and Lauren. The visual is, it's just so, you know, you have to summarize. It's, it's something that reading teachers are very familiar with. Reading teachers are very familiar with. But again, it just kind of illustrates Tim's point in, in terms of elementary, where to become a skilled reader from the very beginning, from our pre-K through elementary school into middle. To become a skilled reader takes all parts of what they call a rope, this reading rope. The top part is our language comprehension. And then the bottom part is word recognition and language development. So if you kind of even just scan this, just, just for the first look, if it's the first time you've seen it, you see how complex it is. But there's lots of parts that have to come together, grade together to become a skilled reader. And we look at by middle school, we're hoping that those grades have already come together so that students can access their science, their math, their language across all curriculum. But in the early grades, in the early elementary years, this is the critical work of teaching reading. It's not just comprehension. Students have to be able to access the material. And that's the bottom part of this rope where it says word recognition, that language development. Right now, we have a program in the, in the elementary school called Foundations. And teachers teach that to our, our students, kindergarten, first, second, third grade. So that part of our program, the materials are there. We need to strengthen it. We're not saying that we're starting new. We've been teaching course foundational reading. But what we now know by looking at the data and by looking at what Tim was talking about, we need to strengthen that in the elementary. And there's lots of ways. The Letters program is a fantastic example of how to strengthen that. There's boost time, there's intervention time, there's different materials that we can access. There's different screeners, ways that we can look at students in the early reading and find out where those gaps are sooner rather than later. The sooner you find them and you can close those gaps and you can be targeting with that, the more they're going to move along this rope, right? So it doesn't mean that one part of this is more important than the other, but you can't do one without the other. So they have to come together. So it's, it's a really great illustration. This is this infographic that lots of people talk about in terms of early literacy and developing a reader. And so wit and wisdom is a complement to the other work that's done at the elementary, as Tim said. It's not a standalone curriculum. It dovetails with foundations and also with something called GOs, which are the level readers. So for wit and wisdom, it has those three parts, foundations, wit and wisdom, and GOs. And all three of those blend together and complement each other to create a skilled reader. So the wit and wisdom program is, is well researched. It has the science of reading embedded in it. It's lined up to our Common Core. It's a very strong reading curriculum. But I just thought this infographic might help illustrate just a little bit of what Tim was talking about and what we talked about when we tried to illustrate early readers. Is that, no, that was a very long answer. I had it. Any other questions related to the wit and wisdom and pilot, piloting for year two?
We don't need a motion for this?
No?
Okay, good.
Yep.
No.
So yeah, hopefully, so for next spring, what we'll do is we'll share out where our data is at in both buildings. And then at that point, we can talk about an adoption or not. Or not, okay?
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Thank you for all your hard work towards this.
Yeah, no, and I want to thank the teachers, administrative teams, the literacy team this year. I think I've said it multiple times, but we can't do it without boots on the ground. The teachers are the ones really making the happen.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to school safety data.
Yeah, so Tim's already shared the data from his report. Colleen, you mentioned it too.
Yeah, I have some additional. I apologize. This report is pretty long. Still June 30th. Got a lot of categories, a lot of questions. Covers everything from restraint, inclusion, bullying, harassment, student discipline, out of school suspensions, expulsion, so et cetera. So sorry, that's not included in your packet. So to date, out of school suspensions, we have 44. Detentions is 151. That would include administrative detentions and lunch detentions that the teachers are kind enough to do. We didn't differentiate between those. We'll do that next year. We had six reports of bullying, three substantiated, 18 reports of harassment, and unfortunately, 120 truancy, which means a student has 10 or more half-days or absences. We'd like to decrease that significantly. We have decreased over time. We see bumps in December and January. We saw bumps this month too, and a little bit in May. Because when you come to the end of the year and some people think the minute the state test is done, okay, we're all set, we're finished. Most of the issues come in transition times. But we're happy to report that, oh, we also had some bus suspensions. We didn't have any last year. We had six bus suspensions. We had two students who had to have their own special seat. It is a problem when you mix elementary and middle school. And then we had 12 bus warnings. We are happy to report that we've decreased from previous year. 110 out of school suspensions and 170 detention, so. We'll take any decrease we can get and we'll continue to work with the staff to provide lower numbers. From April to May, we had 132 conversations with students. Because they were arguing about a game at recess, somebody bumped into them in the hallway. I think we continue to work on how do we improve our systems at recess, in the hallway, during transition times. The middle school kids, sometimes they bump into each other, interpret it in a way that we wish they didn't. So I think the conversation staff have during advisory and with their team meetings is really helpful. And kind of letting kids know, this is okay, this is not okay.
Any questions? All right, moving on to approval of expenditures.
I think that was a board request to add to the agenda. I think that was a board, if I'm remembering correctly, I think it had to do with, we almost had to have a special meeting for an expenditure. Am I like thinking?
It was.
Why is there a page?
It was all set up. It was something we didn't end up meeting right now.
It's lotion. It's motion to reconsider the vote for five thousand for approval being spent that is not budgeted.
So it's down to twenty-five hundred of last last year. It was moved to twenty-five hundred, so any that was not budgeted.
Oh, yeah.
That needed to be approved, so.
To twenty-five hundred. So I just didn't know, I wanted to put it on there to see, because the board has changed quite a bit. Just to see if you want to stay with the twenty-five hundred or if you want to go back to the five thousand.
I think just a little bit of background on that, we get all of the spending issues at times, how many things going on. That we really got proactive and kind of spoke about things and then the fact that we default budgets. That we really wanted to make sure that we were spending it where it should be spent and that we were aware. There was a lot of reasons of not to, I mean, maybe we're nuts.
I think it came up specifically when there was a bus monitor that we hired to deal with some disciplinary issues on a bus. We were recently told if you have disciplinary issues on a bus, hire a bus monitor, but it last year we were. The board was upset that we had hired a bus monitor and so limited the threshold for expenditures to twenty-five hundred dollars without specific board approval. Typically, and in our other districts, we manage a bottom line budget and we make the board aware of any unusual expenditures that are.
I mean, that's that's typically a management's responsibility where we where we, you know, manage the expenses. Obviously, the board approves the manifest, you receive every bill, every invoice, per� accounts payable and payroll and make that final approval. I will say it certainly can can cause disruption. We're constantly looking at every expenditure and determining, well, was this was this explicitly labeled in the budget? Something we budgeted for or we need to take it to the board and then sometimes there is a time constraints where, you know. We, you know, we don't have a school board meeting coming out where we have to wait, so.
Yeah, because we almost ran into something like that, where we like put together, we almost had to put together a special meeting in order to do that. And that seems a little over the top.
I think it was a great year with it, I didn't see any problem with it and I think that we owe it to the taxpayers of Seabrook. They're telling us, we're not gonna approve your budget and I think we owe it to let them know, hey, we're really looking at things. And if the board wants to alleviate their part in the budget, that's up to you, but I think it really shows the community at the SAU office. And the board are really looking at what's spent versus we find out and sue you and I think it went well. But I see kind of a unfortunately, an unraveling just by looking at this of everything that was done with this past year. And I think this was a wonderful thing that was done. I want to know what's spent, I want to know what's being spent. If we have something that we could be spending money on that's needed more than maybe what Matt's suggesting, which usually doesn't happen. But it's been a pretty good system for the past year.
You don't think twenty-five hundred, that was too small of a number?
No, but that's up to you, Lacy, you were you weren't on this.
No, I I thought I was in on it, I saw.
You changed in there, but you were there for it from the beginning.
Yeah, I know that. I'm just saying that hindsight, especially with things that we've been through throughout the year. I think twenty-five hundred is too small of a number.
For such a big scale.
You don't have to have it a number of.
No, but I was just, that was just my question, is if it's twenty-five hundred, if you think that's a fair number. Or if we're if we're gonna abolish, if people want to make a motion to abolish it, or are we making a motion to?
I'm sure.
Or are we making a motion to just change the number?
To shack it to that number.
You said no one, no other school does it, right, Meredith?
That's correct.
Yeah, and they they too are suffering with default budgets as well as we are?
They are not in the budget, no.
No. And that's the difference for Seabrook.
Well, that doesn't change, that doesn't change the way that we expend our funds and manage the funds. It shows trust that we're doing our job and I just honestly, that's my job. And you, the board has full visibility in every expenditure that we make, so that it doesn't limit your visibility in the least.
And we see the man fact.
Well, it does, because once it's on the manifest.
I wouldn't want to hinder.
Well, we need three signatures. Whether you agree to it or not.
Hinder, I think the budget wasn't passed because there was a lot of negativity towards passing the budget. I think if we can, that's one of our, I think that should be one of our big goals this year as a board is to try to. Get the information out to all of our residents on what is going on and be truthful and for us in order to get the budget passed. So I just put it on there to see what the consensus was. Obviously, it's up to the entire board if we want to reconsider or if we want to raise it or if we don't want to have. Approval ahead of time. That's the only reason I said that I figured I'd put it up there. Because I know it was a lot for Matt to or anybody to keep coming to us for over twenty-five hundred dollars, especially for like special ed and.
Special ed doesn't really apply to that right now, because I mean, if we need five thousand, we have.
We don't need.
Yeah, that didn't apply to anything.
That's a legal, so special education expenses are a legal obligation, so we don't need the actual board approval. However, we do need to track that and notify the board every single time.
But you did. Right.
Twenty-five hundred dollars, which isn't typical in.
A building repair.
School board.
It's like lawyers or something like that.
Right.
Um, which if you, I mean, twenty-five hundred dollars is not a lot compared to what stuff like that costs. I don't know if maybe a compromise and going back to five thousand dollars.
Take it off, I mean, if no other school does it, why do you, you guys don't want to do it? I mean, we've been together now for what, a couple months?
We didn't say we didn't want to do it, we're discussing it now, you're putting words in our mouth.
Well, I'll make a motion, okay, I'll make a motion to, um, I'll make a motion to bring it back to five thousand.
Yes, we should. Just get rid of it. Okay, I got a motion by Lacy. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, seconded by Casey. All those in favor? Hi. What was that, Jen?
Casey, yes, Michelle, yes.
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
Yes, Maria? No. No, and Jen? Because I think we're taking away our subsidies as a school board, I don't want to. Yes. Thank you. To the tax.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So that passed.
Not not to, in a similar vein, I'm not sure if you'd like to discuss the grant approvals as well. That is another area that there's a severe time restraints. Where we can't apply because it's, we don't have a board meeting or there can't be a board meeting scheduled. We can always, we can always approve of.
But did they, was it changed to, it was changed to that we needed approval?
Or had to approve.
Supposedly, before an application.
Before we could even apply, so, I mean, even even an adjustment to board approval after the fact.
Before including that.
After the fact. To accept the grant would be helpful, but this is precluding us from even applying for grants. Um, in some cases, in other cases, we're able to accommodate.
Yeah, and I think it's had a chilling effect on people even looking at grants, honestly, because.
And we just talked about them.
Right, I mean, but, well, no, we did look at that one and we did bring it to the board, but in terms of other ones, I think staff are like, well, why would I? You know, look at that, the timeline is such that I've I've got to wait a month before I can get it on the board agenda, why am I gonna even go through this?
It takes a lot of work to write grants, so it's.
Yeah, I can't even imagine.
It's it's hard to justify bringing that work in with knowing that it's gonna be denied, which has happened, so.
Well, I'll I'll, I don't have a problem making the motion.
Can we talk about that? Yeah, we can.
Do you want to make a motion and second it and talk about it, or do you want to talk about it before?
I think we should do what we just had to talk about.
Okay.
I just, I, there was three of us on the board, we went through the grant funding and I can tell you, one of the biggest reasons early on. We came on board with the grant funding was not the grant funding itself, it was the community school that was discovered and uncovered. And I think it made everybody very, very uncomfortable too. Who would have the right to take away a public school and turn it to a community school and it was done very quietly. So I think that made us being new apprehensive to just say, go ahead, continue on. So we never had a problem with grants, we had twenty-three meetings and if a grant was needed, we made it and we made remains to make sure we met them. But we did keep a close eye on it because we didn't want to continue the track before us that was set quietly, and I'll say that again. Without many board knowledge and we wanted to head down a different path, so that's what happened and there was never a time that we wouldn't. Need if their grant came up, so I just think, and you can all listen out there and I hope all the taxpayers watch this, that we are moving back to that path. A year round of a community school versus a public school.
Whoa, that was unfair. Can I have an opportunity to know how unfair?
No, it's just.
Yes, yes.
My opinion. So I can't speak to your belief that the school theme turned into a community school because that was never the case. The funding was to allow your school to better partner with community resources. To support the children of Seabrook in reaching the academic goals that this board was asking us to meet. So for example, we were looking to partner with early childhood programs, the Head Start program, the rec department. The welfare office, the YMCA.
Schools, mental health.
Groups that already have been part of your community for years, so the funding came under a community school grant, a planning.
Didn't even, it didn't even.
Correct, it came through a planning grant from the University of New Hampshire.
I mean, I'm happy to clarify, I've tried to clarify this several times and just haven't been able to, but I'm happy to try to clarify this. We had the opportunity to apply through UNH for a planning grant that would allow us to do some internal work with our staff. And some of the community agencies to take a look at how could we better partner with them in order to support the academic achievement of our students. And we based it on the fact that we knew we had to close gaps of achievement, that's what it was all about. We brought it to the board, we explained, we had a whole presentation about it with the board. We had a large stakeholder group, some board members were a part of that group that came to the information about it before we ever applied. And we had many folks in the community congratulate us when we were awarded a very small grant. Now, there was an opportunity after you get through the planning, there were five districts that were awarded the planning grant. And after a year, should there have been an opportunity from the federal government to offer a community school grant again. Then you could decide whether you wanted to apply or not. From the very beginning, we knew that Seabrook would not be eligible to apply for that community school for a variety of reasons. And I can tell you about those if you want, but we knew that going in, but we still wanted the opportunity to use the resources to bring our community partners together. And lots of great things happened as a result of that work that went on and unfortunately, because of some misunderstanding. Some negative light got there that we were closing the school, we were opening it, we were bringing other kids in. None of that was ever part of the documents or the reporting that we did. We only wanted to help close gaps of achievement by end, by having the opportunity to ask our partners. How they could help us and how they could bridge some of that work. It was about partnerships, not about turning the school into some other community school. I don't know how that rumor got started or what that was about. There was no further funding. Manchester was one of the last communities that did receive the community school grant, much bigger district. They met the criteria for being eligible. They applied two or three times before they were funded. It's a very large grant for for five or ten years. It's a lot of money and it it helps the school district do some great things. We would never have been eligible for that here in Seabrook alone. So I just wanted to point that out and clarify that. I'm glad it came up. I've been wanting to clarify it for a long time and haven't had the opportunity. There was just a lot of misunderstanding. It got linked to other things and it's just unfortunate. But I hope you understand that, you know, we have all the documentation about that work. It was one year only, it started, UNH handled the funding. We met all of the information, we got resources from it, caring school community, we bought that curriculum. We bought other curriculum for special education, we bought books for kids. Kids went home last summer with a book bag of of books. As part of the summer school program that we bought with those funds. We did really good work with a very small pocket of grant funds that we had for one year.
So I'd just like to comment that, you know, so as a new board member last March, the first thing I did was reached out and asked for minutes of the meetings that were taking place. I reached out to the group of stakeholders that were on the list and surprisingly, almost all of them had no idea what I was talking about. Their names were just there and so I did try to do research to say, hey, what is it? Still to this day, I haven't seen a drop of minutes or documentation to what it was that you all did for a year. Because it just hasn't come out and we've asked for it, so I just found it to be quite alarming as a new board member. So there's no misunderstanding when you don't have the understanding because we never have the information.
Unfortunately, I think you were provided some misinformation because you weren't here when we when we did propose it and we did have all of that presentation about it.
No, I didn't.
And it's just unfortunate that the misunderstanding just continued to get larger, in my opinion, but I just want to clear it up. There was never ever any intention, not only for us to become a community school, we weren't, we would not be eligible. Even if the even if the federal government had decided to have another grant cycle, which they did not, but even if they did, we would not be eligible. And none of the grandees that were awarded in our cycle went on to apply, none of them. There was no more cycle.
And to be clear, receiving those funds doesn't change the fact that you're a public school serving the children of your local community.
Absolutely.
So that's the fundamental misunderstanding that I think was getting in the way of all of the dialogue and, well, the the limited dialogue.
Right. Right. Yeah.
And I think it was the dialogue that was exposed that caused the conversation and it stopped, so that's my opinion and I'm sticking to it. But we need to move on, I guess, as a public school, I hope.
So I'd like to make a motion. For, I don't know how you want to wear this, for the SAU to.
Is this our policy?
Move forward with grants. I would have that you, I mean, you can notify us that you're applying for these grants, but I don't think that you.
Need permission.
So you you don't want them out, you.
Permission, yeah.
So it'd be a motion to remove the approval requirements for grants.
Okay.
Here.
Pre-approval.
Or.
Or us accept, us deciding if we want to accept it or not is okay, but the application process, if there's an opportunity, applying, is that?
That's the way it's been, they apply in comfort.
No, it's not the way it is.
No, we stopped them from even applying, there's no effort, no approval.
And we had, we had grants come to us that were applied, but it's already that that was.
Right, so someone here is just saying the timeline is, it's not worth it if and.
No.
Then it didn't have.
They can't have twenty-three minutes to it.
We didn't have that many to it. I know, I know, we feel kind of blindsided a little bit, right?
So.
So can we put, yeah, I'd like to see this.
Do you have?
Yeah, yeah.
What we had actually.
When did the grant.
Because this wasn't on the agenda and I just wasn't prepared.
Okay.
It's just the law tonight, I know.
But, but I also don't want to miss.
We shouldn't miss an opportunity, I mean.
No, so I think we should be able to apply for grants and then the board has the approval to accept if we want to report with.
I feel like that's what it was.
That's why it's what it was.
That's not what it was, we stopped. The grants that quiet.
The grants, let's look at the paperwork and get, have this be the next meeting because it's very important.
Well, I don't want to hinder that until August, our next meeting is not until August.
Why we're not meeting in July?
No, we usually don't.
Why? We haven't even had a goal setting meeting as a board, so now we're not yet meeting for that.
Yeah, we're gonna do it in August.
August to be school year.
Mm-hmm.
That's really late, because we should have already been starting that. It's important for everybody to know what the board goals are so they can work with us.
Well, I think we couldn't work very hard to, we have goals that were set. Um, and I feel like we can all come together, be refreshed in August and, um.
Um, and I feel like we can all come together, be refreshed in August and um, put it together. So, what do we want to do on the grants then?
So if that was the problem, I'll just make a motion, um, I don't know how to word this.
Could I, could I help just?
Yeah.
Denise, to remove the board's pre-approval process for grant applications.
Yes.
Yes. Is that okay, Meredith?
Mm-hmm.
Um, no, I, the word.
To the board.
Like wording.
That's exactly the motion that I would like to make, Denise. I appreciate that.
Yeah. Alright, so Lacey, you're making the motion?
Yeah.
I'll second it.
And this is just so that they can apply for the grant?
And then we can, right, and we can discuss it more. Um, if we want to, or we can just keep it out of this.
So there's a thing to discuss, to leave that.
So the vote needs to go. Lacey? Yes, sorry, your vote? Yes.
Yeah.
Michelle?
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
Maria?
Abstain because I think that the motion is incorrect. I don't think we ever hindered as a board applying.
And Jen?
No. Can I finish? Can I add that to it though? I don't think we hindered as a board ever to do that. I think we just wanted to be in the loop and approval of it. So I think we get some little bit of misunderstanding here, but go on, let me make your, make your.
Alright, moving on to new business. Expend anticipated revenue. We need a motion to ex- expend up to sixty thousand dollars from surplus revenue funds for special education and building costs.
And I, I just want to clarify before we make a motion, um, that all funds would be that are in those budgeted line items for special education and building costs will be expended prior to dipping into this um, revenue. Correct?
Right.
Okay, because we, when I was just trying to go through the finance things real quick when you were doing that, I noticed that we have a balance of ninety thousand. I know that's not a lot of money, you know, as far as special education goes, but I just wanted to make sure that that would be expended prior to dipping into any revenue.
So across the entire budget, all accounts will be expended prior to dipping into.
Okay.
So every account.
Now, are you doing this in all the other school districts as well?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Okay.
Then I will make the motion, um, unless you guys want to talk about it anymore.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to expend up to sixty thousand from surplus revenue funds for special education and building costs.
Okay, we have a motion from Lacey. I need a second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Casey. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. All in favor?
No.
Maria, no?
I don't think we should be asking for taxpayer return of money. We don't have a need for
Michelle and Casey.
Jen, you're yes?
Yes, necessary.
In my opinion.
Alright, moving on to acceptance of gift core PTO.
Our people for another.
Wait, hold on. Waiting.
She has nothing else to do.
Um, we finished the basketball court.
Excuse me, who?
Heather, Emerson, like you. I live at twenty-five fourths court. Um, the basketball court is what you're finishing the acceptance of. They started it a few years ago, but that is the gift, I think. That's the only one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, we just had our last June meeting and we have an administrative meeting in August. To talk about what we're going to be working with. Um, same with field trips is going to be the same. Um, so you guys get information on that later on. Recently, we just did leftover field trip funds. We got T-shirts for that elementary school for field day. We just did um, help our DARE program. They're having my speech party tomorrow. Um, we did, what else have we do?
The beach.
The bench.
The bench, the benches. Yes, that's part of that. Yep, we did the ceremony for that. Mercy did it. She's up there. Um, it was a good turnout. I can't think of anything else right now.
You guys do so much for us. We were so involved for everything you guys did.
Yeah.
Thank, yes. Oh, all the snacks and stuff, we're testing, the breakfasts, the
Teacher appreciation.
Teacher appreciation big was huge this year. We had so much donated too.
Did you save uniforms?
I'm not sure.
Oh, the uniforms, yes.
It's a big one.
Um, that was a huge one this year. Recast equipment. We've done a lot. Um, there was, we also got the refrigerator for the nurse's office, if you recall.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
And I believe Maria in your email back to us, it was an emergency purchase. And we were going to talk about maybe making it acceptable for you guys to approve emergency purchases for them to come into the school if it was like an item like a refrigerator that broke via email. Um, so we didn't have to wait for another month's meeting or
Yeah, I don't think we can vote for
It's not legal for the board to vote over email.
Yeah.
Or, I don't know. I remember you saying something like that, so we just wanted to
That's why I wondered.
I think for emergency, it should fall under, you have a refrigerator or medicine, you need it.
Yeah, we had it left in the
There was confusion.
At somebody's house, so
Yes, it was awful.
It was very confusing. So we don't know how that works with you guys, if we can get, and I like
Typically, you can make a donation, the board can approve it after.
After.
After the fact. So we were told it has to be before for that particular item, but we wanted, that's what I wanted to know. So it is after the facts for that kind of thing.
Yes.
I think we prefer beforehand, but
That was our agenda.
I think we just were clarifying that we could just give the information, not approval from them via email, but here's the information, this is what we're doing, can we pay on the next meeting for that approval?
Yeah, that's true.
And what is the limit? Because I know it's been changed a few times.
So for a public hearing, it's twenty thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I believe it's five thousand dollars for board approval. Double check. In my book, I'll have to double check. It, I, it's different than the other
Right.
the other school boards.
Yeah.
I think we're just going to talk about our next big project soon because we're finishing our basketball court.
Yeah.
So we'll come to you guys with what our ideas are.
Yeah.
Awesome. So while we're waiting for that, I will make the motion to accept an in-kind donation from core PTO consisting of the installation of fencing, benches, painting, equipment, et cetera, for the basketball multisport court totaling approximately nineteen thousand five hundred.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion
Maria, second?
From Lacey, seconded by Maria. All those in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. unanimous?
Internet's not working great. So on my phone, five hundred dollars or less, um, is just um, school board notification. Um, and then anything less than twenty thousand dollars needs school board approval.
Okay.
So five hundred to twenty thousand. So anything over five hundred needs school board approval.
And that includes the field trip funding? Okay. So, because I don't know if it makes it easier to do that as, I know a few years ago, we did a one big lump sum at the beginning of the year. Um, and then like it was approved, but it can fluctuate down if we didn't spend as much. If that makes it easier on them versus you guys having to do it like every meeting, a thousand dollars here, a thousand dollars for ecology school. You know, all that kind of stuff.
It was definitely easier to do it at the beginning.
Okay. So we'll submit that at the beginning of the year, but it's not a check to the SAU. It's still coming, being paid through us. It's how we want to make sure that.
That, that works.
Yes, that was key.
Yes.
And, and we are so incredibly grateful for your generosity, not only from a financial perspective, but also the volunteer work. Um, that we will, we will certainly accommodate and make whatever works, um, if it's where it's easiest for you.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you girls so much. Thank you, Lacey. Thank you.
Looks a bit pacy up there.
Oh, yeah.
My ice cream's slipped a bit.
My ice cream's slipped a bit.
Um, okay, now we're moving on to ta- uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven budget development timeline and deliberative session.
So I know you've all been looking forward to uh, the next budget development. Um, and it is rapidly approaching. We will be um, starting that process um, here at the school and SAU level. Um, you know, end of, end of um, the summer and heading into the school year. Um, we do plan to um, deliver a proposal to the school board um, by November fourteenth. Um, at which point we will meet, uh, we have a few meetings scheduled uh, to go um, over the budget in detail uh, for the board to um, finalize a um, a budget that will then be delivered to the um, budget committee, um, which we plan to do so um, by December fourth. Um, the public hearing is tentatively scheduled for the nineteenth of January, um, and the deliberative session for February second. Um, so um, for this evening, we are asking for approval uh, for this timeline and the deliberative session date of February second.
I think this is as soon as the draft.
It should, it should
At joint board?
At joint board, if I can.
Yeah, so those dates should align.
Yes. Alright, um, is anybody discussion before I make the motion? Okay. Motion to approve the budget timeline and hold the deliberative session on Monday for the second at seven P M. Second.
Alright, motion by Lacey, seconded by Jen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. unanimous? School lunch price recommendation.
Yeah, so the school board is um, is required to set the um, lunch um, pricing on an annual basis. Um, so we are, um, we, we do have our recommended lunch and breakfast um, pricing for next school year, which is twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Um, included on board docs, we have included the historical pricing as well as our recommendations. Um, and we are proposing a um, slight increase of twenty-five cents for lunch and twenty cents for breakfast. Um, while also understanding that um, food security is really an essential component um, of student learning. Um, it's something that we're very cognizant of. Um, the adjustment is um, is necessary, however, um, when looking at the um, sort of the real cost escalation of um, food supplies. We've really seen some um, some significant inflation for not only our actual food, but also like our paper goods and supplies um, have really um, increased. So we are recommending that the board um, approve a lunch price of two dollars and seventy-five cents. Um, breakfast price of a dollar ninety-five. Um, and um, I believe the lunch, I mean, the milk price is sixty-five cents.
I just have a comment um, on this. Uh, we had a letter come from our cafeteria director um, that we were almost six thousand dollars short of not getting um, lunches and breakfasts paid for a few months back. I don't know if the Lions Club and the region ever did write a check to help out with that or not. I know it was asked for, but I don't know what the status. So I have a concern. I know it all doesn't look like much money, twenty cents here and there, but we already have such a big down fall already. I think we really need to read the lunch prices um, as they are if we can for a month.
Yeah. But everything has skyrocketed. Yes, and I, wasn't there an issue?
Right.
I just remembered.
There was an email, email issue.
Where something wasn't correlating for some families, so
Oh, but also families that didn't know they owed money for a month.
So that was, that was needed.
Yeah, it was like a technical glitch.
Yeah, so let's, let's, let's stick to that.
What happened?
Did you figure it out?
Yeah, emails now, I know that.
Yeah.
Yeah, the emails were just spam.
Well, it wasn't good.
Yeah, so we, we appreciate, because I, that was how we were notified that those weren't going out. So, um, so we did, we did fix that and messaging was sent out to the, you know, to families at that, that occurred. Um,
I'm just wondering if that has something to do with the balance sheet.
I think it does.
That, that likely did, because people did.
How much?
All of a sudden owed fifteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, because it all pays. I owed money and I
We have a debt, we, no, um, we have a, we have a deficit every year, thousands of dollars, um, um, in unpaid balances. Luckily, we have been supported by local organizations, um, and um, and individuals who have donated um, to cover balances. Um, otherwise, um, you know, the school district covers that, whatever cost that is.
So out of that money, do you know today how much was recouped is what I'm asking due to the, um, I mean, that was a big problem.
Yeah, the, the balance, I don't have the exact number um, on me, however, the balance is roughly the same as at that point in time. So those balances only increase over time and we may have recouped some once we, um, once that, once those notifications were corrected, but um, just, just, that's a
Do you by send them out, um, just to let us know what the update was, was recouped due to that? Because that was
I mean, I can't quantify what was recouped based on emails, but I can, I can send you what the balance currently says.
Yeah. Thank you.
So does anybody want to make the motion to approve a lunch price of two seventy-five, a breakfast price of dollar ninety-five, a milk price of sixty-five cents for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year?
Great, okay, go ahead, Ken.
Motion by Casey, I need a second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Lacey. All those in favor? Aye.
Maria?
Maria?
Due to the economy and the struggle people are having already. Thank you.
Oh, uh, next is E, award of bid special ed transportation.
Thank you. Um, so the bid process has concluded um, for our special education transportation contract. Um, this was a cooperative bid process, um, when we issued the RFP. Um, so it included um, not only Seabrook, but also Winnicott, North Hampton and Hampton Falls. Um, and that's meant to achieve, um, you know, better quantities of scale and um, the, the really the optimal pricing. Um, so bids were sent directly to seven transportation vendors, um, five submitted bids. Um, those bid results are um, included in board docs. Um, and we are recommending award of bid to Durham School Services for a five-year contract, um, to provide special education transportation.
Alright, so I need a motion to award the bid for special education transportation to Durham School Services for a five-year period, July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty thirty.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Alright, motion by Jen, seconded by Maria here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. unanimous? Summer hiring. Motion to authorize superintendent of schools to offer contracts during June, July and August.
So this is, um, practice has been placed in all of our districts and um, it was not in place here last year. The board wanted to have meetings for all hiring decisions. Typically, for timing reasons, if people are leaving over the summer, it's challenging negotiation if they're leaving another district. So we try to act on it as quickly as possible. Um, if the board does not incline to support this motion, I would just try to coordinate some dates upfront so that we can know when the board might be available in July. Or even later this month.
Um, do you end up just notifying us of what is going on?
Yeah, you, the board would still be invited to participate in the interviews for professional staff.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, but then we try to move pretty quickly on hiring over the summer because
Right.
it's, we want people available um, when schools start.
Yeah. So does anybody want to make the motion to authorize superintendent of schools to offer contracts during June, July and August?
I will, I will. Doesn't sound that different than what's now.
No.
Other than just an offer and then let us know in August.
It's a summer.
You'll let them participate like people do it?
Hmm. Okay. Motion by Casey. I need a second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Jen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Maria?
I'm going to abstain and the only reason is that we had a lot of hiring issues that we had to put the bias out with. And I think the board worked really hard, so I, I just kind of want to watch our new um, approach to it and see how it goes. So I'm abstaining on that.
Alright, early learning plate group. I think that was
Yeah, so I wanted to discuss this again. Uh, I had several parents reach out to me, most of them others that were part of the early learning plate group last year. Um, they moved some stuff to the library, um, to the work center and, um, maybe this is something that we can discuss during our retreat, um, about how to
um, about how to, um, I don't know, integrate something into our school. Last year, we decided to eliminate the learning room, um, and right after we did that, we all received a lot of emails. And even more recently, um, after, um, the joint board meeting, I received a couple emails and, um, people just telling me that, you know, how much they look forward to the, the playgroup, their kids, um, their, even though these other things are great, that it's, it doesn't compare to the kids being in the actual school. Um, so I just kinda wanted to like reopen up their discussion and get more information on it, um, just because it was brought to me by, by parents that were adamant about it, so I just figured I'd give it, um, a shot. Maybe we could talk about it in the retreat and get more information about it, or maybe because last year we had issues with it, and we can talk about those issues and restructure it a different way. But I just wanted to put on the agenda to open it up because I've had at least six mothers talk to me about this, this playgroup, so, um...
And how was it funded previous, was there a grant or it wasn't?
I don't know.
There's no finance?
Cost to the playgroup, Patrice Baker, who's the early learning specialist, just funded through, um, grants.
Oh, there's no cost? Okay.
She delivered the playgroup, um, assisted by, um, Annalise Dunn, who is the SAU Y social worker, who was also well, the SAU board just accepted the donation for that.
Right. It's continued at the library this year?
Yes.
Done very well, but the space isn't as conducive, and the parents had a good opportunity to be welcomed into Seabrook, where their kids are going to go to school, many of them have kids already in the school, these are just younger kids that are getting acclimated to early learning and the importance of that, so that's helpful. Um, also, it's, it's been difficult for Patrice to do her job on early intervention transitions. She's our liaison between the early intervention center and Head Start and the school, so, you know, when she's participating in those transitional meetings, she's on Zoom. Um, and that's been difficult, um, she's a very valuable member of the SAU, both here and in SAU ninety. SAU ninety started a playgroup in their preschool this year, it's gone extremely well, so, um, it would just be wonderful to be able to have Patrice participate personally here again.
I think it's important that we hear from the staff too, because I'm gonna go roll it back, cause it's actually came to the board from Lacey when all the hubbub was going on, that smoke was being smelt in the hallways, the, the classrooms were being disruptive, people were coming indoors and not checking in at the front office.
No.
You didn't remember saying that?
I, I never said anything about smoke, I never...
No, I'm saying, I'm just saying some of the stuff came from you, you don't remember?
Oh, I, yep, I did have one complaint saying that they were going in the side door, we all discussed that.
Safety.
And then, I believe it was, um, Mr. Belanger who said that he would make it a point for them to go through the front door.
Yeah.
We talked about that extensively, cause that was a hu- that was probably the biggest concern that the board had.
Yeah.
Um, but the other stuff that you mentioned, I don't remember saying that at all.
No, I didn't say you said it, I said those were just some of the things, and then the disruption too, in the classroom, um, for the teachers.
Okay.
So I wanna hear from them and see how they're kinda looking at that group too.
I think it's a... Well, and I think that's why we should do it during a retreat where we have more time.
Yeah. So...
Cause if that's okay with everybody, if we put that as, as something that we can throw up again.
Mm-hmm.
Does that work for timeline for you?
Yeah, absolutely, it's, it's something that I feel strongly about, it was a really ver- very good thing that went away and would love to see it come back, but I agree, I think it could be done,
Okay.
um, in a way that involves the teachers, I think the way that the program was structured, you couldn't do both.
Yes.
And so, yeah, the spaces were being used, and they maybe weren't always happy with how it was being used, so I think doing it in a way that the teachers are, can be present for the playgroup would be part of it.
Yeah, okay, but, yeah.
I think it'd be tremendous, and if those are the types of opportunities that people will move to Seabrook for, um, and, and enrollment will grow, if, if we can really build it from the ground up, I think it's great.
Valuable.
Right. So more we can get there in the schools and with teachers and personnel and build the community.
Yep.
So I think that would be a great discussion for some, our retreat that we, that we have to, to go for that, and...
I mean, the biggest thing is, was the not using the office, and we didn't know what people were background checked, we didn't know who they were, they were in the malls, they were coming in the other doors. So I think that, and, and I'm gonna be honest with you, the board made that, I don't know how many months in a row, hey, guys, you know, this, this has gotta stop, they gotta come in for safety. Most than anything, they just kept continuing. So we had a, at a point of, well, if it's gonna interrupt the day, the teachers, the classroom, safety, we can't do it here anymore. I don't think that's what kinda pushed us, so hopefully that can be re, um, with that.
Revisited. You all did make a vote to allow Patrice to come back and help with kindergarten registration, and that, we appreciate that.
Right.
If there's any way that we can get her to participate in the transition meetings for, you know, preschool and Head Start, um, and to be on site for those meetings and to help Christian, we would appreciate that as well.
Yeah.
Cause she's that liaison, when we get those early intervention referrals at age two and a half, and we've gotta get them into school by three, she's that person that handles all of that, um, along with, uh, Annalise Dunn. So if we could get her back to do those things at least, and then talk about how you wanna structure the playgroup for next year, we're happy to have those conversations.
Yeah.
Yeah. Perfect. All right, that sounds good. Um, the personnel is, will do that.
It's non-public.
Non-public, yeah. So, uh, couple, just two more things, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six board meeting schedule. Um, everybody have a chance to look at it, do we need, um, a motion to accept it, or is that at the joint board level?
Neither, um, you just need to let us know if there are any dates where you have conflicts, because as you can see, there are limited opportunities to move things around.
Okay. Um, all right, the only one I see, but it may not be an issue is November tenth that I knocked out here, but, um, other than that, should be fine. But I'll find out on that right away.
Yeah, and that's just to change your regular meeting date because that instead is falls on your normal meetings.
Right. All right, and then moving on to Seabrook's school board meeting, Tuesday, August twenty twenty-five, just for information, it'll be second Tuesday in August. I think that's it, and we need a roll call to enter into non-public session, session under RSA ninety-one dash A colon three two.
B, C, and L.
B, C, and O, what?
L.
L, B, C, and L.
There's a...
Oh, oh.
At seven twenty-seven P M, and who's going to make the motion?
Yeah.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Motion by Lacey, seconded by Maria, all those in favor?
Maria's second. Um, it's a roll call.
A roll call.
Jen?
Yes.
Lacey?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And Casey?
Yes.
Okay, you are... Steven? All of you, Mark?
To end the non-public session and resume the public meeting.
Yes.
Yeah. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye. Thank you. Now we need a nomination.
I'll make a motion to accept the superintendent's nomination for Christine Nigra. For a special teacher.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Casey, seconded by Jen, all in favor?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Do we need a motion on the reassignment?
No.
Okay. And we need to make it, another motion to go back into non-public.
I know. Yeah.
So, so we make a motion...
Make the motion and then we'll do a vote.
To, uh, go into non-public session under ninety-one eight three two L at seven forty-seven.
Sorry.
And Maria, leaving?
At the second, and then a roll call.
Yeah.
And then we're leaving.
Okay.
Motion by Lacey, seconded by me, everybody will call.
Let's see.
Aye. Aye.
Wait, is Denise going to roll?
Lacey?
Yes.
Michelle? Yeah.
Um...
Casey?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
And Jen?
Yes.
Okay. So...
Are you explaining to them what we're doing out there?
All right, so we're back in public.
Yeah.
And whoever wants.
I'm gonna make the motion, I move at the board vote to resend the April third, twenty twenty-five letter of non-renewal issued by the superintendent of schools to Andrew Cordia.
I'll second that motion.
All right, all right, motion out there. Motion by Maria, seconded by Lacey. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And one of you should also address the other issue taken up during that session.
Yeah.
Casey.
Um, we also completed an investigation from the incident of May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one, and affirm the school's decision, um, in regards to that bullying case.
Okay.
The vote is four to zero to one abstention.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Jen? Motion to adjourn.
I'll second it. Um, Michelle?
Uh, wait, I'm ready, motion to adjourn, Jen, seconded by Lacey, all those in favor?
Yes. Yes. Aye.
Aye.